Time or data out of the kindness of their hearts do this kind of work because it's quite labor intensive and expensive. So that's something I would, if it's not in there, I really feel like it should be. The other thing is I noticed that there isn't a line item or something mentioning about a park service person that came up in several meetings throughout the year of being able to hire a parks manager or park service person. And that one wasn't listed out specifically unless it's just going to be adopted into one of the four positions that's already there. Oh, no, that's court employees or for 11 public works people or something like that, or one of the admin staff that's going to take that on. The other thing I didn't see but wondered about was that there's no list for a job searching for a new city manager. I think in the past, the city has hired a group or company or paid some sort of search. You know, public city group, I remember in the past that we've done that to get city managers to apply. And I was just wondering if the city is going to pursue that, if that's a budget item and how it's going to be for an official new city manager.
Thank you so much, Ms. Metzger. Anybody else? All right, and we're gonna go ahead and see if there's anybody who would like to speak on the preliminary agenda presentation. Go ahead, sir, and identify yourself and. Doing great, thank you.
I'm kind of, I hear your question about the, about the city manager having a vehicle. My comment would be, I think it would be a poor representation of our city to have any doubt with the interim or our new city manager coming up to not have their own, to not have a vehicle supplied. I think the cost of it would, it's a minimal thing. A city manager which, which primarily help keep the city jail together. And I don't see any objection to what the city manager having, having a, having a vehicle.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, please?
Could you turn that microphone on?
My microphone should be on, I'm not sure.
The one for the public, the public microphone is not audible.
Come to the middle. Or is it on? Please, if you're gonna speak, please come to the middle mic, please.
Again, I'm Herbert Clark, and how are you guys doing? The point of the city manager having a vehicle supplied by the city. I think will be, I think we will be a poor representation of supporting our, our city manager. The interim or the upcoming city manager. If we would question, question a matter of $30,000 to that they will have a, a city-owned vehicle. I think it's well-deserving of the, of the position. I think it should be done without any question. I think it's just the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks again. All right. If there is nobody else, I'd like to come back to the city council. We have Councilmember Hassan who just came and joined us, and I'll see if he got any questions. Councilmember Hassan, you have any question on the budget since he is our accountant? Well, we'll just go ahead and proceed, but if you got any question in the middle, and we also have another chance to, to dig deeper at the city council meeting on December 7th. So I think I'll close the public hearing at this point, and I would like to go ahead and adjourn this special call meeting, and at this point, we will start with our work session. And first, I'd like to read the work session resident comment policy. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the council referencing only agenda items after the mayor and the council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. At this point, I would like to see if there is any change to the work session agenda.
Vice Mayor, I would like to make a motion to add an item to the work session agenda.
Okay, sir, we have a motion, and what is the agenda item, sir?
I'd like to add under F1 for old business, a discussion of the proposed Fresh Harvest truck that I believe will be voted on at the December 7th council meeting was discussed and tabled at the last council meeting.
Do we have a second for this?
I'll second that.
All right, and before we go ahead and vote, is there any discussion, any comments on this agenda item being added? All right, and I'm sorry, ma'am, not that, not this one, not right now. So I would like to go ahead and see all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who are opposed? So, well, the ayes have it, and we will add it, but instead of all business, it will have to be a G14.
The other thing is there are people here to speak on it, that's why I put it in old business so they could speak and then go if you wanted.
But we just added it now.
Vice Mayor, if I may, it was actually postponed at the last meeting to this work session, and so it's not added to, to the agenda. There's been a clerical error there. It was considered old business, it should have made it on this agenda.
That's fine, sir, all right, so we'll add it as old business.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
So when we, when we last discussed this, you're saying that we, we did what? You said we tabled it?
We tabled it to the next work session and council meeting. That's what the council voted on to do.
We tabled it contingent upon them doing some additional research on their MOU.
Which was emailed to all of council.
So it wasn't supposed to just be put on the agenda, I thought we had to wait to the work session because we've already discussed it.
We are in the work session.
I mean, council.
Referring to the council meeting.
Yeah, we've already discussed it, so I thought it was supposed to go on a council meeting agenda.
Oh, no, in that, this, the, the point of the work session obviously is to discuss items that will go on the next council meeting. And so historically, and per our current policy, you know, at least our current operating, you know, working, operating, or whatever you want to call it, items that are tabled do end up in the following work session before they go on to a vote. And so that's what was tabled.
I, I think it's okay, sir.
That's fine, I just needed understanding.
Sure, yeah, that's a fair question.
I also had a question because I think, I don't remember us voting on this, I thought we just removed it from the agenda item.
That is correct.
I thought we voted to table it.
No, I don't think so. Did we?
We did, because he made the motion, I corrected it to postponing it to the following council meeting.
To table it?
Yeah, and there was a vote in that motion.
Okay, all right, never mind then, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead and present it, Councilmember Carroll.
So it's F1?
Yes.
This is, it's gonna be all business, yeah.
Yeah, so we discussed this somewhat at the last meeting, but essentially this is a proposal by Fresh Harvest for $65,000 funding the city for a food truck. And they've circulated and updated memorandum of understanding, which I believe they've stated that they will provide $130,000 in discounts from fresh fruit, fruit and vegetables to Clarkson residents in exchange for the $65,000 grant, so essentially the city would get a two-to-one return on its money if the city were to invest in this, in this food truck. You know, there's been some discussion. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, and I think there's been some discussion about the exact source of the funding, whether this would fall under the business or ARPA program or a separate ARPA program, or whether some of it should come from the regular budget, or some should come from ARPA. But I think that there are Fresh Harvest members and other community members that do want to speak in this item. I don't know if the council wanted further discussion before opening public comment, if you just wanted to hear from the public. Vice Mayor, I defer to you on that.
Yeah, first, we're gonna listen, I guess, from the council, and I will start with my take on this. I've had actually a very good conversation with the, with the organization's representatives. And my, I definitely do like the idea of providing a discount, fresh fruits and vegetables for our residents. My only concern is that it's not, that it does not fall into the ARPA category. And I am honestly not trying to go to jail over something that I'm not supposed to do. So I don't feel like we should just, you know, put it on the ARPA money, but I'm definitely willing to entertain the idea of using our own money because this is an investment technically that we are doing on a vehicle to do some service to our residents, and I feel like that could fall probably partially, not the entire amount, partially it could fall under from our budget, from our own budget, not from ARPA money. But that's just my, my take on this. And apparently it's not added to the budget so far, so they're gonna have to be further discuss it and see if we can fit it on next year's budget. Councilmember Hassan.
Is anyone here?
You turn on your mic, Councilmember Hassan. It's not you turning, yeah, you got.
Yeah, is anyone here? Can someone come to the microphone, please? Okay, I requested some sort of information from you, and I received it, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I am, 2021, that's best, and rejection of your 2022, which, you know, it just kind of have a question, so the public donation for 2021 was $94,000, and you're expecting this year $100,000, so I understand that there's nothing much really increased up here, but the item that I like to ask you is Fresh Harvest, Harvest, it's $9,750,000, and you're expecting 53. 2021, you ended up negative 400,000, I mean, 400,000, so your budget was 103. And your expense was 104, change, so it was negative. And this year, with the expectation of $60,000, your budget is double, $236,000. Your personnel last year was 9,000, this year you're expecting administrative personnel for $50,000. There is some discrepancies for the forecasting, so why the harvest you're expecting is higher by 87%?
Yeah, so that makes a lot of sense.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Joshua with Share the Harvest that we're talking about. So those budgets, when you're looking at 2021, the the numbers there, they are seeing on the Fresh Harvest contribution, that part is like paying personnel, things like that. There were no in-person markets this past year because of the pandemic. And that's one of the big reasons why we're here in the first place is to help get those started back up. And so that's why this coming year, we're expecting to have a, hopefully have this truck that you guys can help us out with, and we would have a lot more people working. So part of that is like the equivalent of two full-time employees, and so some of that money is going towards that. And then in terms of it being like net zero, so Fresh Harvest, the company here in Clarkson, it's baked into the mission statement to serve the community. And so a decent amount of funding of the company as a whole goes towards this. And so when it's plus or minus a couple hundred dollars or a thousand dollars or so, that's really not a big deal, like that's, if we spent a little bit more, that's perfect, that's great. The whole goal is increasing access to healthy food within the community to those who have the least access. So that, I think, addresses some of your, of the questions you just asked, but I definitely look forward to more questions. And thank you as a, if I'm able to talk more, thank you so much for each of your time talking over the week. It seems like what we did is I talked with each person and got your individual ideas, and then we developed that draft MOU that you guys have time to look at, and then tonight, hopefully the goal is finalize that draft. And then from my understanding, once we decide those details tonight, then Mr. Quinn would make it final, so the next meeting, it would be all in writing, even if it's, even if you make a couple changes tonight, that's great.
How, how was your budget look for 20 year before, I mean, 2020 or 2019, where you never existed?
Yeah, so before that, let's see, the pandemic started right at the beginning. Yeah, so before that, there was in-person markets that were happening once a week with lower donations as a whole, so when probably not a little more than half as much it is now, so a lower amount, probably 75% of this number you're seeing now. And so those numbers are lower mostly because there were, there was a smaller audience of people that we were soliciting, soliciting donations from. When the pandemic came, a lot more people initially started buying groceries online, which is how we do business. And so we increased our audience, and now more people know about the Share the Harvest market, and more people donate on a weekly basis.
So suppose you didn't get the truck $65,000, that means everything on these numbers are going to be going back on 2020?
Yeah, 100% of those expenses are like the refrigeration, insulation, getting the build-out, all of that is only the truck. So all of the other funding is coming from donations or from Fresh Harvest. So what we're talking about here, just the $65,000, is purely for the vehicle. And the reason is, Share the Harvest, we do all of our capital improvement kind of things, special like investments through grants. And then, once we have those grants, we find a way to sustain them ongoing. So that way, we're not, like in this case, we're not sticking the city with ongoing costs. This is a one-time thing. So, so yeah, that's kind of how it's set up.
So because 2021 and 2020, you know, it's exactly the same for, for the expected donation. So is there any other effort that you will do to raise your donation?
Yeah, I, I do think so. I mean, nothing's promised, that's why we, and then increase the numbers already, we like to budget low and then go higher. But what we're imagining is that once this truck exists, we would do a, a large outreach campaign. And once, you know, once it's in the newspapers and everything's like, oh, wow, look at what Clarkson is doing, then we can get a lot more donations, and as it is now, even with our existing customer base, we don't really advertise Share the Harvest. At least we haven't this past year because we're, we're not doing a lot of straight donations. And so this, this money right now is just people occasionally being like, oh, I'm not gonna be home this week, I'll donate my basket. So yes, we expect those donations to go up, but for budget purposes, we're just budgeting low.
$94,000.
Say your name, please.
Sorry, can you state your name?
Allison Burnett, also with Fresh Harvest. The $94,000, that's the same as 2020, that's of, as of October. So for example, last week with Thanksgiving, our customers are very generous, so they donated around $10,000. And so what we've done with that is expanded baskets to Afghan families, and so we do as of a few weeks ago, as of October, do about 20 baskets to Afghan families. And so with the surplus of donations, so we'll probably land over 115,000 for 2021, so it will be an increase from 2020. And we foresee that with the growth of Fresh Harvest throughout Atlanta, that 2022 will have 130-plus thousand dollars of donations to use.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Hopkins, or I think you had a question?
A little bit of a question, and I don't know what this is.
I think your mic is not on.
Sorry, I'm not sure, this might be a question for the council, but I, I do a lot of reviews, performance evaluations of people who live on grants. And one of the things I always ask myself, they say, you know, got a half-million-dollar grant for such and such. Was this a competitive grant? Like, is this something everybody's fighting for, like an NIH grant? Or is this something that, like, pretty much you ask for it, you can get it? And I'm wondering like why people aren't knocking down our doors to get this grant, and that's because we never issued a grant, like, there's nothing that, you know, you're expected to write to meet the criteria of our grant. You don't have to make a proposal that meets what we said we're looking for in this offering. This is, as you said, not really ARPA, because this was going on even before the pandemic. And it's a separate budget line item, it's essentially a new service that the city would be sponsoring. So that, to me, goes into competition with things like getting translators, getting, you know, park management, getting other items, it's a completely separate line item that we just, I, I'm kind of wondering where it came from, like, it just sort of came up from nowhere to me that, oh, let's get a truck so people can sell discount vegetables.
So I'll answer my part of that.
I think, first, let me see, your question was to the council, I believe.
Well, yeah, like, how, how long has this discussion been going on, and where exactly did it come from? Like, this is not a grant that I don't know about, is it, that the city said we will offer grants to, you know, put forth your proposal as long as it meets these criteria or?
Councilmember Carroll, do you have an answer?
No, it's not, this is brought to the city, it wasn't a city proposal. I mean, this is brought to the city, I think initially it's part of the ARPA business application. I mean, I think, I don't know the details how it's brought to the city, I think Fresh Harvest could speak to that more than I can, but it wasn't like a city proposal, like for.
We're not issuing grants now for.
Well, we are issuing grants, just we're issuing the ARPA grants on the current criteria.
ARPA grants, yeah, but like I said, this was, began before the pandemic, so therefore before ARPA. I'm, I'm kind of with the vice mayor there, I'm, I'm not gonna risk going to jail for misspending federal money on something that's not within the purview of that grant. We do have very strict restrictions on that grant, we have to defend that it tied to the pandemic.
We could ask the city attorney the question of whether or not he thinks outside ARPA, because I think that's a legal question, but I mean, I don't know if you want to do that now, or you want to talk about that later.
I think we can talk about it later, but I honestly would not even care what the city attorney says, because if I feel something is not right, I just don't feel it's right. So I, I'm sorry, I mean, this is kind of very borderline, because we already hear on the news as a cities what's happened with ARPA money, so I, I'm not really gonna entertain, honestly, but we can talk about using our own money, not the ARPA federal money. Because that one, you got to report it, what we used, every single cent has to be reported to the federal government in that guideline. And then if the city attorney made a mistake and told me, I'm the one who's gonna be voting on this, so I'm gonna be the one who's gonna be responsible. So I don't really look at this like that, but anyway, Councilmember.
Johnson.
Johnson, sorry.
My question is, your, your Fresh Harvest is predominantly ran off of grants, have you tried to find a grant for the truck?
Yes, so, so this is the first step for that grant process, and kind of to your question of, of where it came from. So when ARPA first came into existence, what we read was that it was a, a unique opportunity for state and local governments to make strategic investments in long-term assets, and to help create programs, invest in infrastructure and help struggling residents. So we read about that in the paper, and we're like, that sounds great, talked to the city manager, and he was like, that sounds great. Here's what you do, fill out this form, so we filled out that form, and it took a while. But eventually that form made it to you all and then got onto the agenda. So when we wrote this proposal, we kind of thought we were writing a, a grant into this big pot of the $2 million where that comes, from my understanding, there's like $2 million, and there's maybe like 600,000, I've heard a couple different numbers, but about 600,000 left. And then there's another 2 million for the next round. So when we were writing this, that was our understanding, is that we were writing, as everyone was, we knew about a couple other businesses that were maybe doing stuff, and some, some other like nonprofit things that were happening. So we thought that was all applications into this one thing called ARPA. So that's what we understand.
Thank you. Any other more additions from you, Councilmember Perkins?
I would like to address a couple of comments. One I would like to hear from Mr. Quinn, especially since his professional credibility has come into question, that do you think we pay him to advise us more than competently on our decisions as council in terms of whether or not we are putting the city at legal risk? And so I'm not sure that it is helpful for us to make statements like we don't care what our legal counsel says. If that's the case, maybe we need to find new legal counsel, but I don't think that's what we're discussing. So I would like to hear from Mr. Quinn in terms of the legal ramifications of taking this out of ARPA funds in a moment. I would like to point out, I do think this does fall underneath ARPA. There are multiple ways that grants happen. Some are from foundations or other granting organizations, for example, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation with, you know, specific missions that write grants and open up grant opportunities to different organizations and entities that would like to advance the cause of that organization, foundation, whatever you want to call it. And other circumstances such as this, when a city or other organization might come across additional funding, you know, as is the case here, organizations, businesses, individuals might propose a, a grant, request a grant, suggest something that hasn't been suggested before in a particular way that could benefit the public. I think as a council, you know, we have an opportunity to encourage innovation in the organizations and businesses, and as many of the people here who are presenting today are indeed Clarkson residents seeking to better the lives of their fellow Clarkstonians. I think it's an opportunity for us to encourage that kind of innovative thinking, even if it's something as small. And so I, I think, you know, perhaps there's another, something that hasn't been brought to the table, discussion, some other reservations, but I, I'm not sure, not wanting to hear the advice of our legal counsel, you know, but also stating that we're afraid we might be putting ourselves in legal jeopardy. It doesn't seem like good decision-making to me. So, Mr. Quinn, if you could, I would appreciate your perspective on this as to whether or not this falls underneath the guidelines of ARPA. Are we putting ourselves at legal risk, and if so, is there some sort of compromise where we could continue to benefit the citizens with, and avoid charges or going to jail?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council. So honestly, it's a close question as to whether the proposed use would fit under the ARPA allowed uses. I mean, the, the one that I think it would need to fit under is obviously, you know, economic relief for persons that are having an economic crisis or downturn that can be tied to the coronavirus pandemic. You know, obviously, we've done a lot of things with housing, that's one of the main categories. Supporting businesses is one of the main categories, paying for public safety is one of the main categories. You know, providing food to people that need it is not one of the main categories. Whether we could fit that under one of the categories, I think it's definitely possible. We would want to, well, let me say that at, at the last meeting, I didn't really receive direction to look at this in detail, and, and so I've only looked at it a little. And, and so I've only looked at it a little bit. And I'd be happy to, to do more and, and, and provide the council with a, with a firm written opinion. From what I've seen so far, I think it would be very important to set up criteria for the beneficiaries, which would really be the folks that receive the food, rather than the folks that are asking for the money to run the truck. And so, I mean, one concern that I would have is, is the truck willing and able to go through the process of vetting the folks? You know, somebody would need to do that for us to feel comfortable that the people receiving a benefit had a need that was tied to coronavirus. So I think that, you know, what, what a couple members of the council expressed as far as, well, if these beneficiaries were already food insecure, of course, it's great to help them, but is that an ARPA use? And the, I think the bottom line as of this moment is that I'm just not able to, to say that with certainty that it is. I think, you know, like I said, it, it's, I think it's something that's possible if we were to carefully put guardrails on it in that either the city or the Fresh Harvest folks, or somebody that one or both of us hired, would do that kind of vetting like we have with the housing. I mean, we don't just, we haven't just opened up a bunch of units and said, anyone who needs a place to stay can come stay here. We had them come in and demonstrate how the pandemic created their need for the housing assistance. So I, I, I know that's not a really strong and definite answer, but, you know, the way this IRS Treasury thing is written, it, it's literally hundreds and hundreds of pages. And when I looked through it, I just, I didn't see one that went directly to this issue. So that gives me some pause that it may not be allowed. And I would just ask that the council give me direction. I mean, do you want me to invest my time and, and your legal fees in digging into this? And if so, I'll do that and, and get you the best answer that I can as soon as I can.
I guess, thank you, Mr. Quinn.
I have another question for him, sorry, go ahead if you want.
I just want to say a few things. I think we have a lot of agenda items, we need to go through this quickly. What I want to say is, we already have business assistance set up. So, and that business assistance is to businesses that has been impacted by COVID up to, and it was initially was $5,000 maximum, and that was increased to $15,000 per business. So there is already money there for businesses that has been legitimately impacted by COVID that lost their business or their clientele or any other reason. And that's being run by our city manager. So I think we already have a program, number one. Number two, I do not doubt Mr. Quinn's advice, but I definitely, as an elected member of the council, I definitely have my own discretion to, to make while I make decisions. So I, I think there is no consensus, from what I see, in order to encourage Mr. Quinn to study this further, excuse me, sir. And at this point, Mr. Quinn, thank you for your answer, but I do not hear consensus. So I, I think let's give it a few more minutes and go ahead.
Well, I guess, my concern is, is that we've been doing food drives with ARPA money now, and they don't vet the people they're getting the food. So if it's not allowed for Fresh Harvest to give out food without vetting the people, it seems like we've also been violating ARPA by doing food drives with ARPA money and not vetting those people. So that's why I would want an opinion from Mr. Quinn, if we need to stop doing these food drives with ARPA money, because those people aren't vetted if we can't do the Fresh Harvest without vetting as well. So that, that, that's my concern, whether or not we do the Fresh Harvest truck. I think we need an opinion on whether or not it's permitted for the city to use ARPA funds to give out food without vetting.
We have already had that discussion. And the, the difference in what we did with the food distribution and Fresh Harvest, I did not purchase a $65,000 vehicle. All proceeds of the $50,000 went to purchase food, and it was given away to the city, free of charge. I didn't charge anything. And that's one of the criterias that we already went over, and that's the only difference. We, Ms. Cowie, can you back me up on this?
Well, I just wanted to list actually what the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds did list the four categories that the ARPA funds can be used for. And just briefly in a summary, but I can go into detail, the mayor and city council, if you want me to send the information to you, is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impact, including assistance to households, small businesses, and industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Two, C, that was A and B. And C is the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction of revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year to the emergency. And D, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Cowie. Any other new comments from the council?
I mean, I would just still like to hear from the city attorney at some point, whether or not it's allowed to give out food without vetting the people. Because if what he just said is right, that you have to vet each recipient to see if they are suffering from COVID, then we can, we can't do food, you'll have to stop vetting the city. Each person that gets the food is suffering from a COVID-related economic downturn, just like we can't have Fresh Harvest do it.
I, I think there is a big difference between giving out some fresh vegetables to our residents than six, giving a business, a private business, $65,000.
From a legal perspective, from a legal perspective, it's the same analysis. If you can't, if you, if they have to vet the people they give food to, we would also have to vet the people we give food to.
Well, I think what I heard was that it's a matter of, should we be focused on the beneficiaries, the ultimate people, or the business that we're supporting? Now, for the food drives, the people doing the food distribution is us. I mean, at least one member of this council was laid up for a couple of days because their back was out from throwing turkeys and food too much. But
And thanks for doing that.
You know, so we're not paying labor, we're not a for-profit business. It is money going to food to people, and it's distributed 100% guaranteed within the city of Clarkston. Now, if we're going to a private for-profit business with a truck that is mobile, I mean, to start with, in Clarkston, by definition, if you live here, you're within a half a mile of a grocery store, because it's a one-square-mile town, and we got two grocery stores in the center of it. So if, if people say we're a food desert, it's those apartments that are just outside of Clarkston. I can see a lot more use for it and service for it, for those areas that are outside of Clarkston. And if we are to annex those, then that might be a different thing. But within Clarkston, it's a matter of, is the value to us to have a truck to get the food to people that is already only a half mile away more valuable than, say, other things that we could do to help combat this? I mean, that's, that's.
So they respond to that.
All right. I think, um, at this point, what we're trying to get is a consensus, councilmember Perkins and Carol and everybody. I know we're not gonna agree on everything, but from what I see, and I say this from the beginning, the only thing I hear here is that, that there is more councilmembers who feel like they don't think this is ARPA. We're not saying we don't want to deal with this organization. I'm saying, we, if there is a consensus from the council, we could use our own city funds, taxpayer dollars, then we have to vote for it, and that would be legitimate than using federal dollars. I know it seems like it's free money, but it's not free money. We have to report it based on the criteria that the federal money is giving out, giving us. And so because of that, I'm not entertained. And they still are eligible to get up to $15,000, they have to apply and go through the process. I've already told you on the phone that you still have the right to apply for the grants that we already appropriated by the city council. And that application process is dealt by the, by the city manager, and the city council have no say on that. But, and the rest of the money, we could see if we can fit it on next year's budget. And that's the only solution I see here, is if more councilmembers are okay with it, and that, that definitely has to be started, we need to have the conversation restarted. But at this point, I don't see a consensus that we can go ahead and proceed unless you feel like it. So we're gonna have to vote on it next Tuesday.
I would like to hear what Stephen thinks, if it's allowed for us to keep on giving food drives without qualifying the recipients.
But can we just?
If it's not, then we need to stop that, too.
Oh, can we do this later?
Councilman Hassan as well, I appreciate your perspective on things to do in this.
No.
All right, go ahead, yes, please.
Yeah, it looks like that we are putting two things that's different. I mean, Mr. Jimmy, and we don't have to make it, you know, food drive is a gainous, you, you know, capital expenditure. So at the present time, this needs to be more discussion, and I'm not for it, that I have to be incur another expenses for the, for the city attorney. So I don't think that food drive is equal to the capital expenditure that we have to offer, you, you know, to a business. So vetting, you know, people that will give food is, is not what we have to discuss tonight.
All right, thank you. I think we're gonna have to end on this, on this agenda item, we're gonna go proceed. Oh, well, okay. Is there anybody else from the public besides those two speakers who'd like to speak? Please, go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name is Hillary Cheeseman, and I'm a resident here in Clarkston. I also work with Envision Atlanta. And at the beginning of the pandemic, we knew families that were struggling with food issues. So we ended up partnering with 11 organizations here in Clarkston, and have been feeding up to 3,000 people a week. We haven't asked for any money, we haven't, we've been doing this through donations, through, we got the Atlanta Food Bank to help us, and they have us on their COVID relief, which they have actually just extended now till July 2022. But Fresh Harvest came on board with us as soon as they knew, and they have been giving us free food, enough for about 300 families every week. So they have been providing for us. We do send out surveys to see where our families are at. We do try and judge where they are at financially, how they're struggling through the COVID relief and things like that, so that we know that what we're giving them, we believe we are meeting a first need. I know you commented about us needing translators, which we all know we need that badly, but food is a basic need. And, you know, when you're taking a bag of food, which we're doing it every other week right now, to a family that have 10 children, and they're a single mom, and she's gonna have to make it another two weeks before she gets them more food, it's pretty important. The other thing I want to say about Fresh Harvest is that although the Atlanta Food Bank has been providing a lot of food, a lot of it is not the kind of food that our community wants, or, or can, or even know how to use, because it's canned food. So the joy of Fresh Harvest is that what they're giving us is what they eat. So they're giving us the fresh spinach and the fresh, sometimes I don't even recognize it, but it's going into, they know what it is. And, and every week, it's top-quality food that they've been donating for nearly two years now.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was thought of something else, I forgot.
Thank you. Next one, is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Please, go ahead, ma'am. If you could state your name, if, and your address numbers only, and the street name.
My name is Amin Osman, and I'm living in East Pontcharon, Cobal Mile.
Thank you.
And I want to thanks this organization, because this time Afghanistan came in America, and we didn't get, and, I mean, fresh food to get. Last Tuesday, I was with Afghanistan, and they're here. We get the food, vegetables, and some blanket for them. So I think we would like to have fresh habits in this community, because most of food is coming from garden, is a fresh. And I don't think, like, I mean, Howard, Mayor, Councilor, you and other councilor, to say you cannot help that organization. Because many people need a fresh food. That is.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Hi, members of the council, my name is Kate Lindsay, and I'm speaking in support of Fresh Harvest. I've been a home-owning resident, as well as an employee in the Clarkston community since 2017. I work for Friends of Refugees at the Clarkston Community Center, managing the Refugee Family Literacy Program. And from my experiences over the past four years, I can attest that many Clarkston residents struggle to afford fresh nutritious food. The median household income in Clarkston is just under $36,000, which is 20,000 less than the average for Georgia. Almost 36% of Clarkston residents fall below the poverty line, and 31% of residents are on food stamps. The Atlanta Community Food Bank states that the food insecurity rate in DeKalb County is over 25%, which is significantly higher than the national average. Research also shows that many residents feel that it isn't easy to access healthy food. According to the Clarkston Food Needs Assessment conducted in 2017 and 18, several key barriers around accessing healthy foods were cited. Transportation, cost, and lack of healthy food being the most frequently mentioned. Let me share a real story that illustrates the reality quickly of this data. One of our students at Refugee Family Literacy unfortunately began to have marital issues a few years after moving to Clarkston, and in 2018, found herself managing her whole household of six children without the support of her husband. The family already received food stamps due to their income and family size. However, now our student found herself having to navigate the social services on her own, and unfortunately, it was just too much. She didn't understand benefit renewal paperwork, and she lost her food stamps. So we helped her reapply, and in the meantime, get groceries until the food stamps were eventually reapproved, and she was able to find work. But without a driver's license, she had to regularly rely on rides to the grocery from others, at times when she couldn't find childcare, walking with her little children in tow a mile from her home to Thrift Town and Back was not an option she wanted to do very often to get food. Imagine how much time and energy she could save if she simply had to give her oldest daughter the family's EBT card and let them walk right outside their apartment door after school while she was still at work. The barriers around food access are not unique to this student's story. We support many student families with applying and renewing food stamps. And due to the complexity of the application progress, process, there are frequently gaps of benefits for households, and budgets then become very tight for food. Other smaller families barely miss qualification for food stamps and also have challenges around devoting dollars to food. Many students either don't have a car or share a car, making transportation to large, affordable groceries difficult to arrange. So thankfully, during the time of the pandemic, we have seen the community come together to improve food access. The one, the food drives that have been most accessed by our participants are ones in which produce and fresh items have been offered, not just non-perishables. We are very pleased to learn of the possibility of Fresh Harvest resuming and upscaling their share of the harvest market.
I'll give you additional 30 seconds, ma'am.
Okay. At Friends of Refugees, we also offer programs where we ask participants to pay a small fee to participate or receive goods or services, as we believe it maintains dignity for the receiver and the value of the services or goods being exchanged. So please, I encourage you to consider this proposal more thoroughly, because it really could benefit many in our community who struggle with barriers around affordability and access to healthy food. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'll keep it brief. My name is Maggie Utey. I'm also a resident of Clarkston, and I teach at Indian Creek Elementary School. And to echo what some other people have said. And to echo what some other people have said, there I see in all of our families, um they struggle to access food. And I see that this um Share the Harvest program would be really beneficial for our community in removing one of those barriers. Like Ms. Lindsay said, it's not always easy for parents to walk um a mile with their kids and carry their groceries back. And um Thrift Town is great, but doesn't offer the most fresh options. There's a lot of other things that are more affordable. Um, they add fresh fruits and vegetables. And um just to comment on what Ms. Lindsay said about. Um, they offer some services where people pay a small uh a small amount. So they actually have a toy and coat drive that they do every year for our school in particular, and then they offer those. Toys and coats to parents again to maintain dignity. And I also see that it would um prolong like the sustainability of the program. I think if it was all given away free, like there's a there's something, I guess, beneficial about that. But then the ability for them to do it over the long haul wouldn't be there. So I also would encourage you to consider their proposal. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to finish quickly. Hi, I'm Joshua Poon. I'm Nepali. I'm living here in the city since two thousand eighteen. I got a chance to serve my community through food distribution with the Invision Atlanta. So I haven't seen, I have seen the situation of my people. Some are low income. And four and five members are depending in one person salary. Many are not to speak English and don't know how to drive. A lot of struggle are in their life. They need someone to address their struggle. I got the chance to use Fresh Harvest product. It is fresh, healthy and cheap. When they had market below branch before COVID, I bought there. So our people can afford uh our people can easily afford it. So I think it's good. They pay a little bit and no no need to depend always for free. Even though we are immigrant and earn money less than any other American. But inside our heart, we want to eat healthy, live healthy, and contribute to the community with self-respect. Rather than people always feel sorry about us. Fresh Harvest are good-hearted people. I'm working with Invision Atlanta for food distribution. They give their product there because of that. I know they are good servant-hearted people. Uh, I am personally delivering food for refugees. I see they're they're needed. I'm thankful and they're thankful heart. My people will not come here because they are scared, uh have no confidence. And also don't know about their rights. I'm here representing my people. Even though I feel I'm very confident person, I feel, you know, shaking. So think about, you know, those people who live in apartment, how, you know? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, council members, I'm Dr. Andrew Kim. I'm here representing ethne health. It's really good to address you all, and I'm really thankful for just the work you've done during the pandemic. And um yeah, especially in regards to food. Uh, I really appreciate the Fresh Harvest approach to this problem that we have in our community. And whether you guys use ARPA funds or other funds, I think this is a really innovative kind of brilliant program that follows in Beverly's saying of bring it to the people. This is a way to bring food that's healthy in a sustainable way that dignifies people. And I think you guys see that, like, this is not giving food away for free as just pure emergency relief. This is allowing people the dignity to purchase food that's healthy and good for them. And we're involved because Fresh Harvest approached us with this idea of maybe having food prescriptions. I think as patients, some of you, I'm sure are patients of doctors, doctors, it's so easy to prescribe a pill. It's much more beneficial, I think, to prescribe a new way of eating and of eating healthy. And I think that's a partnership that can really exist in this program. I think it would be innovative, not just for our community, but in the nation. Like, I don't think there's many programs like this. I think this is something that Clarkston would uniquely benefit from and could really display and show other communities how to do something similar. So I would strongly urge you to consider this proposal in any manner. So thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Uh, anybody sign from the uh Zoom?
Yes, sir, we have Mr. Moore.
Uh, Mr. Moore, go ahead, please.
Oh, yes, we could uh we could all sing the praises of Fresh Harvest all night long. And there's no doubt about it. They're they're a good organization. Um, the problem that I'm seeing here is that they're requesting something specifically from us. And not going out to anybody else to ask for the same proposal. We don't have a grant out for this, as Laura pointed out. And there are people that do have uh programs that would help them. And even going to DeKalb County and ask for the same funding and see if DeKalb County uh would invest in Fresh Harvest. That would be great. Um, for the years that they've been around, I would like to. Uh, I would have liked to have seen them have better documentation of all the wonderful things they are doing. And as Ms. Cheeseman had pointed out, she's got a dozen different organizations that are contributing. To the cause in Clarkston for uh getting food out to the public. Um, it's it the request is actually asking the council to pretzel their thinking and their logic, twist it all up. To try to make this work. And repercussions in the long run, uh basically the blowback would be that we lose our credibility with the federal government. In not properly administering funds when they made them available. Um, that that can be an issue for us down the road. I would have liked to have seen Fresh Harvest do a full court press to get this score. Across the board. Uh, go to Bill and and you know, go to the Gates Foundation, go to uh DeKalb County, uh go to the state. Uh, look for grants. Search a little harder. Uh, this is this is the first stop. Somebody mentioned to the city manager, the manager may have been incorrect in saying we could do it. If he if he could have done it, he probably would have done it when the first application was put in. Um, I I am disappointed in the immaturity of Jamie Carroll trying to destroy any type of food program that the city has developed. Um, just because one of his uh constituents is not being supported in this uh. In this pretzeld uh logic to give them money. Uh, so thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Medford.
Thank you. I just want to note, please refrain from specifically addressing a single council member, because that's kind of disrespectful. Thank you. Mr. Medford.
Actually, it's Mrs. Medford. Um, I I am, I I'm baffled. I I'll admit, there's some some twisted logic, but it's the twisted logic that. You're trying to avoid helping people. There are thousands of residents in our city that suffer from food insecurity. By the way, a food desert means that you do not have ready access to all fresh vegetables. You could Google that to get the information. And Clarkston is listed as a food desert on um government paperwork, state paperwork. We're listed as a food desert. So having a business in our city that is willing to provide food for our residents, and it's not just any food. It's not a can of beanie weenies, guys. We are talking about specifically cultivated vegetables and fruits for this community. Their own vegetables, things that honestly I wasn't raised on eating. My family's a farmer, so when I'm raised on the American southern farm food, I have no idea what Nepalese folks would eat. But Fresh Harvest does, and they provide it. They provide those fresh vegetables and fruits for the people. They provide jobs for our residents. They're like one of the top five employers of all Clarkston residents. How can you not support this? What about like, I can't believe you're not falling over yourselves to be the first in line, the first city in line to pave the way for others. To show how a city can come together to nurture its community with food and accessibility in a way that raises up everybody. This isn't about making you look good. It's about making us, our community, our neighbors, look good. I'm shocked that you're quibbling over sixty-five thousand dollars into where specifically it comes from. If you're gonna pay seventy-eight thousand dollars to fire a man sixty days before his term ends. I feel like you can find sixty-five thousand dollars somewhere in that budget. Since we have the budget and can go over it, you guys could simply add it as a line to the budget since it hasn't been finalized yet. This would be great opportunity for our city to shine in a positive way.
Thank you. Um, is that all we have? All right, I'm closing the public comments.
Could I have the public comment too?
I'm sorry, uh, we don't have time, sir. I really apologize, but we have to move on. We got so many other agenda items. But we definitely heard you, sir. And I think there is definitely, uh, we understand that um. That your service is important and good, but the only difference we are having disagreement is over the source of that money. So and we're gonna have further discussion on this agenda, and we're gonna have to reset and talk about it and how we're gonna handle it. But we're not saying uh we don't want to help your organization. Thank you.
If I may, Vice Mayor, everybody, I thought he gets three minutes, right? We asked him questions to come up and answer.
Go ahead.
Okay.
That's fine. All right. You know what? Go ahead. You got three minutes.
Okay, thanks so much. Well, I guess first, thank you guys all for talking. Sounds like um maybe there are some heated feelings. But it seems like everyone is on board, at least that we want to try to make this work in some way. We came to you guys because you're our city. We this is who we are. Uh, it's where we are. Um, we want to be part of our city. Um, so that's why we're here. Um, and we're grateful for all the work you guys are doing. Uh, we want to jump in with what like Deborah threw her back out like like Ms. Hopkins said. Doing all this work, we see a way to to help her out, um to to work together, to partner with ethne, whatever it is with with the schools. Um, we see so much opportunity. Um, I'm not exactly sure what next steps are, but I would love to hear. Before I leave the meeting to know what our next steps are, whether that's fifteen thousand ARPA dude, city council line item now. I don't know how you guys work the technicalities, but um it sounds like we're all on the same board generally to try to find a way. To make stuff happen, and I'm really grateful for for all the time that we've gotten to talk.
Thank you, sir.
If I may.
Did you want to add something? All right.
Would we be open, since it sounds like the, you know, as uh Josh said, um, you know, this agreement is on the source of the funding? Would we be willing to just add a line item to the budget since we're in the process of these hearings for our next public hearing for? For this food truck and buy uh.
That that's a totally different conversation. That's that's why I mean.
I beg to differ. I think, I mean, that's, you know, we've stated we need to move it forward. Right now, we're discussing the twenty twenty-two budget. So what plan are we going to bring this back up for discussion if not now?
You can definitely uh talk with the city manager and tell her that you would like to add that. And uh it will be added to the line item, and we're gonna vote on every every single thing that will be added, so. I mean, that's what I could say, if there is any agenda item that.
Mr. Bagme.
Pardon me? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, it's a limbo now, so we don't have to leave it a limbo. I I'm unfortunately. I mean, Mark and me are not gonna be here for the for, but this is crossing to to next year. So somebody has to put in the agenda, and then finally either it goes yes or no. It has to be voted for, and then basically, you know, they decide whatever the next step is. But we just don't have to leave it hanging, and then we have, you you know, we have to add it up. Somebody has to add it on 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 the agenda next next.
I agree, and the thing is, the budget is not set in a rock. I mean, we can always amend the budget. So I mean, that's not really uh an issue, so.
And just to try to understand, Councilman Hassan, your your suggestion, we move aside into our council meeting next week and go ahead and vote on it.
Council meeting next week, we're not voting for it, but it's it 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 has to be further discussion, or it has to be the work session of January. Which is finally the new council or you you know, has to decide what, you know, what what's the next step for. So it has to be on ongoing continue ongoing issue. Because right now it's an it's a limbo, so we haven't, you know, we haven't decided any anything. So that's my suggestion, that's if, you know, the council agrees. Somebody has to put it on the agenda, whatever it is gonna be.
I I would just like to add, it's not just the source of funding, but also the spending. Um, just from the people who've spoken tonight, somebody said, you know, about walking a mile to Thrift Town. If you're walking a mile to Thrift Town, you're not starting inside the city of Clarkston. And somebody else said about living in the.
Uh, Laura, that's not accurate. You're gonna need to look at a map.
Uh, I'm sorry. Can you not speak while the council is in session? I'm sorry.
Yes, and Willowbrook Apartments are also not in Clarkston. So this is my concern, because as much as there's a difference between helping food insecurity for people. Which we all know this started long before COVID. And so this is this is one project, and it's serious, and we need to uh look into it and do what we can to help people. Whether or not it's related to COVID is another thing. But also, it's not free money that we're talking about. It's money we've taken from Clarkson taxpayers. And so we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that it is returned to Clarkson taxpayers or residents. Uh, in whatever form, in food or otherwise. So if the truck is gonna be operating primarily outside of Clarkson, that is a concern that uh Mr. Quinn gave before. We have no way of monitoring or controlling that.
I would like to address that briefly.
This this are more technicalities, sir. Please, can we go ahead and we're gonna discuss this.
Sure. Well, Vice Mayor, I believe this, it sounds like this is going to a vote. I would like to address a couple of statements. You didn't allow me to address them previously. So if I may.
Yeah, but we're not gonna be able to to finish the meeting on time, so we got twelve other agenda items.
I'm aware of that.
And this is not, we just added this at the last minute and.
Actually, Count Vice Mayor, uh, number one, that's incorrect. We we postponed it. It was not included. Uh, so again, if we're going to be about policies and procedures, uh, I think it's important that we do follow them. Uh, and make sure that uh things are properly moved uh in the agendas. So to your point, uh, Councilwoman Hopkins, um, in the MOU, I think those are really good concerns. Um, and and I agree with you. We don't want to have things happening outside of the city limits. Um, I do think it's important, you know, as uh Mr. Quinn stated, that we make sure that this aid is going back to this, you know, residents of Clarkston. From my understanding in the MOU that was sent, um, you guys have agreed to um to only track money that, you know, in the form of discounts. Um, that that are being received at specific Clarkston addresses, um, the apartment complexes. Uh, and so that would that satisfy your, I think it's a legitimate concern. I just think that would satisfy it. And so I think with that included, we do have an MOU that was presented to us. Are we comfortable with that moving forward to a vote? We can all, you can always shoot it down at the, you know, at the council session with your vote. But are we comfortable with this moving forward to the the next meeting? I I'm getting mixed messages on it. I've just answered the questions that you've posed, and and we had a very extensive discussion on it. Um, uh, Fresh Harvest has been more than gracious with us to entertain our questions, to send emails, to try and solicit feedback from various members of council. I just want to make sure that those questions are clear and that and unless there's some, you know, something I'm misunderstanding or some some project that I'm missing that that we're hoping this goes to, which I think is legitimate. Um, I'm having a hard time understanding why this can't move forward.
I'm sorry, that was one of the questions that was brought up by Mr. Quinn at the last meeting when we tabled it is, is there some way we can guarantee the truck? If we're paying sixty-five thousand dollars for capital expenditure for a private business, that it would operate exclusively in Clarkston, and and we can't. So.
Well, I think the same the same challenge exists for the vaccine cards. We we've dealt with that challenge with with some of the incentives we've done for vaccines. We were had the same challenge with the food distribution as well. Um, you you know, I think the question is, do we have other programs? My my concern is just to make sure that we're consistent with the with the concerns that we raise across different programs. I think they're all good. Um, but as as you all have stated, and I think it's a valid concern, we do want to make sure that we are uh doing our due diligence, that we are being good stewards. Of the funding that is entrusted to us by the federal government. And so that that I'm just having trouble seeing how this is different or or presents any new challenges that we haven't already. You know, said, hey, we're willing as long as it helps the general public, you know, in our general area. But I think we have some solutions here. I mean, do we need GPS on the truck to make sure that it is at specific locations? These are things we can we can put in writing.
I think we need to move on. Like, this was a last-minute item, and we have thirteen items on the agenda.
That is an incorrect statement, but I'm okay with.
Thank you, yes.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, I do have a question um for um clarity. Um, we do need to make a. Um, we do need to make a decision whether to move this item forward to the D, December seventh, city council meeting for a vote. I want to make sure that we are consistent with how we are moving forward with this item. Is it tabled deferred or are we moving it to December seventh for a vote?
Um, I think that's up to the two council member who put it on the agenda. So usually if a council member wants to put it on a vote, it's always their leisure. So I really leave it up to council member Carol.
I would like to move it on to December seventh.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And, um, anybody else? All right. Thank you. And we're gonna go ahead to move to new business. Um, we have G one review, discussed this plus four B and C Roland, Row Diet, um, Roland Street. Closure options and I would like to recognize, uh, Ms. Cowie on this agenda item. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, this agenda item is to review and discuss additional options for the Splot zero four B and C Roland Street Road Diet. Closure options from Market Street to Norman Road that were, that, that was substituted to the construction on the Federal Highway Administration required street skate sidewalks on the south of Roland Street. Um, there was a discussion with our consultant engineer. Um, the city proceeded with drafting an agreement for all parties involved to sign, which resulted in a request to stop those negotiations with the property owner in twenty twenty-one. Um, so the cost option for this amendment is seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, Mr. Larry Kaiser is here to give a little bit more details on, in reference to this project.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'll try to get through this in thirty minutes or less. Just kidding. Five options. So not to rehash the last couple of years. So where we are now is, uh, we have five options to you, uh, in the handout. Uh, those five options have been discussed numerous times over the last couple of months. Uh, the most recent was that I did meet with the property owner. Um, and the property owner's sister, uh, last month at the corner of the firm insurance company. And I laid out very clearly what the options have been over the last couple of years. Uh, and then, um, we talked about what might be the best option, uh, to, uh, to her in terms of allowing access into her property. And, and the option that, that I recommended, if I was in her shoes and I presented it to the sister, um, the sister is a engineer working for the Georgia Department of Transportation. And she highly recommended that my suggestion be accepted by, by her. Uh, and so that option is, uh, to put bollards on Roland Street, but just after the driveway that exists on Roland Street. So the property owner will still have full access in and out of the driveway. The bollards, the other set of bollards will be at the end of Roland Street at Norman. Uh, and her sister strongly suggested that that is a great option um, for her to, um, for her sister to accept. Uh, and she did in my meeting with her onsite. And so that option is number four, yeah, number four, uh, which is the lowest cost of all the options. Um, and it still allows us to have, um, access for pedestrians on the road as well as bikers. And, and as a history about this, we have to provide some form of pedestrian activity on Roland Street as part of our street skate project, as part of the scope of the work using federal monies. And we talked to previously here just about an hour ago about fulfilling federal obligations. Well, this is one of them. Uh, and so we looked at various options. That's the cheapest one. That's the one that she's acknowledged and accepted through, through talking to her sister. Uh, and, and that's the one I would recommend.
Thank you. Um, council member Johnson.
Get anything in writing, Mr. Kaiser? Change her mind in a minute.
No, other than, um, other than Zufan and her sister and I all talking to each other together. I think that is, um, I mean, that's, I didn't get anything writing, but I think that's more than adequate. I can surely get something writing, uh, from her. Um, her sister is going to most probably, um, sign it for Zufan. But regardless, uh, they were, they were satisfied and her sister was very satisfied, actually.
Okay.
Council member, go ahead.
Um, I have several questions. So is it still gonna be, it's gonna be two ways?
Two way from her driveway to Market Street.
From her driveway to Market Street?
Correct.
So what is the purpose? Like, we're still gonna have some sort of separation for a sidewalk or the path is still, there's?
No. So the, the access is the sidewalk in front of the annex to behind the bollards. And bikers and walkers can access all of Roland Street from bollard to bollard, from her driveway to Norman Road. That becomes the pedestrian access, which is what you need to have as part of the federal street skate project.
So if they're like bike, well, bikers are gonna be on the road anyway. So there's not, it's not gonna be like the path. It's not gonna be separated as it is.
No striping. Anybody can use either. I mean, we can put striping down the middle of the road to separate bikers from walkers. I mean, we could do that. That's easily done. My suggestion is just to keep it open. It's a short stretch of roadway. It's pavement.
Does close it to traffic completely and then drives the cars back onto Rogers or Church?
Oh, yes.
For that block. Now, that was the point, Trent, to keep it at least one lane open and then to have a completely protected area
I get it.
For bikes.
Believe me, I had that conversation with them onsite. And I said, if we keep one lane open, it has to be one way. You choose which way you want to have one way. It doesn't really matter to me. Uh, and, and Zufan and her sister said, oh, we don't want that. We like the other approach, which is having her driveway fully open from there back to Market Street. Believe me, that was one of the options. I mean, I talked to that, about that for ten, fifteen minutes. So in exactly what we would do, about a one lane for cars and one lane for bikers and pedestrians.
But typically on a city street, if a city's gonna make it one way, do they get the approval of all the residents and businesses that are on that street? Like, wouldn't that be? Well, I mean, we don't need, we need their agreement if we're gonna close their driveway and make them, their customers come in through the back parking lot of another business, but we don't have to get their approval if we're keeping the street open and just making the path go right down alongside of it, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's within the council's purview, council member.
Yeah.
And, um, uh, even, uh, the idea that, uh, she would object to the bollards, no, it doesn't, I mean, we can still do it as long as we don't shut down her driveway. But, uh, I think we agreed. So, um, uh, that's another option. Like last time, I mean, uh, I was in favor of that as well. Is it making it one way?
I thought that's what we were gonna go with from our last discussion. To make it one way and have the path extend all the way down.
Yeah, that, but you also said, present all the options. And that option I just presented right now.
I thought you meant to us, not to them. Okay.
So. Option two is what council member Hopkins is saying, right, sir? Is that option two? So make it one way.
One lane traffic, yes, correct.
Okay. And.
Two or five, right?
I guess two. So the option is between two and four. I think those are pretty much what we, the council might have to narrow it down to.
Yeah, one of them was the use of bollards and the, that was, that was number five, which is the most costly one. Number two was the, what's, what's called the narrow median, it's called skinny median.
Right.
In Georgia Department of Transportation terminology, where it's about this wide and it's about that tall.
Mm-hmm.
It's all concrete.
Right.
From one end to the other. Uh, and that's, that's the sixty-seven thousand dollar, um, number two, correct?
All right.
And then there would be a protected path.
Yeah, correct.
Walkers, bikers, services, no.
And the suggestion would be if you're gonna make it, if, if the council is going to make that decision about one lane and one lane, one for bikers and one for cars. My suggestion is that the flow of traffic needs to be from west to east and not east to west.
Right.
Because when you come out of a driveway, that driveway is gonna have a concrete island in that driveway. And so you want to be able to go in and come back out. You don't want to come across traffic on the, on a, on a right. So the driveway become right in, right out is what they become. And so you need to have it from west to east, not east to west.
All right. Okay. Thank you for that recommendation as well. Any other questions? Go ahead, sir.
I guess one of the question I agree with, I've asked the council, I think the choice is probably between two and four because we definitely need protected access. It's just how we do the protected access. Uh, the other question I had is, is it possible to do like a, like a, um, walk pedestrian crossing like the white line striped connecting, uh, Roland to the path? So then that way the bikers can, or the walkers can cross safely. Um, what's that? What across from Norman?
Yeah, we have that on Norman, actually, part of the, the Splot oh four B and C project. You know, when we started talking about this a year and two years ago, we actually have a path from the end of Norman, a green pathway from the end of Norman across the end of Roland across Norman to tie into the mock trail.
Just making sure of that. And the other question.
We can do the same thing, councilman, on the other side of Roland.
It, it might make sense to do that. The other que- question I had is, is, I think the sidewalk stops on Norman at some point. Is there a plan to connect that eventually or is it just gonna stay?
No, that's all part of this, this process.
That would be connected.
And the reason we did that, because we knew we'd be tearing that out two years later. So the street skate project, I took that out, street skate project to save some money.
Okay. And then the last question I had is, is it possible to get this agreement in writing from her before the next council meeting? Because if the council decides to go with option four, I want it in writing from her that she'll agree to it. I don't want to have a dispute later like Councilwoman Johnson said, saying, oh, I changed her mind. I don't want.
Yeah, if you go to four, I'll get a signature. But if you go with two, if you go with uh, two or five.
Then you don't need a signature.
Get a signature because she's not gonna agree to it.
But you technically wouldn't need a signature for two or five, right? You could do it without a signature.
Not necessarily, sir.
And that was requested.
But we're not gonna shut down her driveway.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying. Two and five wouldn't shut down our driveway.
It's a right, it becomes a right in, right out.
Right. Two, two and five would leave a driveway open. That's why we wouldn't need.
Partially, yeah. Remember, it's a right in and a right out. So you won't be able to come out of her driveway and go across. It has to be right in, right out only because it's a one lane street, one way street.
But do we need her written permission in order to do that or no?
You know.
I think Mr. Quinn can answer that question quickly.
Hello, I'm here. So let me a second to unmute. Um, I mean, the city has authority to control its city streets, put on a speed bump, make it one way. Uh, uh, all the things you talked about with the exception of cutting off access. You know, it's, i- i- if you remove the access from the private property to the public road, then that's basically a taking. And we can do that too, but we have to either have the property owner agree and, or go through a process in court where we pay the fair market value of at least the diminished, the, an amount equal to the diminishment. Uh, so if you're, you know, I, I don't have, uh, I, I, I'm not certain which one of the options you're asking me about if you want to restate, but you know, as long as the public has access to the private property from the public street, then there's no taking. Now, I mean, that's a simplified version because there are cases where take for example on Lawrenceville Highway. They put in a median and so people could still get there, but they could no longer turn to get there. And I think that might be considered a taking. Um, you know, a partial taking. So I'd want to look at the facts, um, in, in detail to, to give you a real solid opinion, but the way the council's been discussing it sounded right to me.
Oh, just a follow up on that. So would it be considered a taking if we make it a one way just up past her, uh, driveway? Would it be considered a taking? I, I think that's where the, the question is. And even the, putting a boulder would still block it one way. So I'm not sure how, why she doesn't want.
No, the bollards would be just after her driveway.
Right. But even this one is gonna be the same thing for the much. Oh, well, it would be open, but only one side.
Yeah, no.
They could get there from Norman Street. They could get to it from Market Street if we did the bollard.
Yeah.
Option.
So she's still gonna do it. Anyway, uh, I think we don't have to worry about her, but at least for our city, we would like to know if we make it, um, a one way after pass her driveway, is that a taking? So that's the, I think the main legal concern that, uh, needs to be addressed before we go move forward, I think. And, but the other ones, you already agreed. So if we find it in writing, that'll be helpful so that we can weigh our options. Uh, I think that's between those two.
I think as long as the, is the, as the access is still relatively easy. And if I'm understanding it correctly, it, it would still be in and out in two-way access. It's just that the motorist would have to proceed in, in one direction and not the other. Um, so you know, somebody might have to go around the block, but I, I really don't think that would be considered a taking. I mean, I could see an argument on the other end, but I don't think so.
Thank, thank you, sir. All right. Uh, any other questions on this from the council? Okay, hearing none. Anybody? Did anybody register to speak on this agenda item? Ms. Quin, Ms. Cowie?
Um, Mr. Or Mrs. Medford.
Um, Medford? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to thank the council for working through the issues and coming up with what I think is a great solution with option four. Uh, pedestrians and cyclists will be protected. The business owner will be, uh, still retain their access. I think it's a great compromise. Um, taking a look at the engineering drawings that are in the packet, the agenda packet. Uh, it's pretty plain to see on the engineering drawing where the bollards are gonna be placed at the beginning and end. Uh, I think it's a great solution. It, uh, backs up with what the city had been selling the public for many years, that that area would be closed to the public for cars and would be used for pedestrians and bikes, which is what we were told. Um, this is a good compromise that allows the business owner to use that space to still get in and out. And frankly, if the business owner agrees to option two, I think we should probably respect that request. Um, if we were given, if we gave her options and then don't respect her request for the options, then why did we bother giving her options? Um, just seems kind of disingenuous to offer something and then take it away. So, uh, I think that y'all have done a good job with the compromise here and should move forward with the option that was presented with option four. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else register? All right, anybody else in this, in the house, in the city hall, want to speak on this? All right, see none. Um, all right, we're gonna go, go ahead and move to the next agenda item. You might have to stand.
He sure does.
And, uh, it's G two, which is, um, to review and discuss a relocation agreement between the city of Clarkson and Georgia Power for the Splot four B and C Roland Street Road Diet Project, Roland Street and Wagner Street Project. And I would recognize Ms. Cowie first and I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Due to the construction of Splot oh four B and C, the Roland Street Diet Project, Roland Street and Wagner Street Project, it will become necessary for the Georgia Power to adjust the existing facilities with an estimated cost of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. In accordance with the franchise agreement with Georgia Power, the city is responsible for ninety percent of the estimated cost of the relocation expenses at thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. The pole on the corner of Roland Street and Wagner Street will be relocated and increase and will increase in height and converted to a vertical framing. I will let Mr. Kaiser explain that a little bit more to you. The city shall also be responsible for any, any and all costs incurred in acquiring additional easements for right of way, including without limitation, easements for lines, assess, um, access, tree trimming, guy wires, anchors and other devices, appliances and facilities and any and all other easements and property rights as may be necessary for Georgia Power to install, operate and maintain its facilities. Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Larry Kaiser is here. If you have an additional question.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Do you want to quickly, uh, put it in the layman's terms?
Sure, Vaneesh is quick when he talks about an infrastructure. Uh, so, yes, the pole is in the way. The pole has to be moved about ten feet to the east. Um, and the pole is within Georgia Power right of way. Roland Street was the Georgia Power trolley line. They were there before anybody else. Uh, and so they have ownership of the right of way. Um, the pole that's gonna be used will be a, a sturdier, stronger pole because we are increasing the distance between poles. Uh, and as a result of that, you need to have a more heavy duty or pole, uh, including the appropriate. Uh, and as a result of that, you need to have a more heavy duty or pole, uh, including the appropriate um, connections at the top of the pole to carry the additional span wire. Um, and so that's, that's the essence of the project. We just have to move the pole about ten to fifteen feet to the east. Um, the comment about the easements, yes. They're very likely, not likely, there will be an easement for the guy wire. There's going to be a guy wire associated with this pole as well as the areas now there now. And so that guy wire goes about. I don't know, about ten feet or so beyond the right of way or the Georgia Power right of way that's out there. And so they're going to have to negotiate with that property owner as they did years ago for that guy wire location. Not sure what that cost is going to be, but I suspect it's most probably maybe a thousand dollars based upon other things we've done before in the city on the streetscape project for locations of guy wires off of city right of way. And so that's the essence of the project.
I got a quick question. So was this a forecasted relocation or is this a new thing? Why did we have to relocate relocate now? And we did not do that uh, when we did the project.
We did. So two years ago, um, we began asking Georgia Power to move the pole as part of the road diet project. So it's been in the works for two years. And that is not uncommon. They're finally giving us the agreement after. I cannot tell you the number of correspondence we've had with Georgia Power on this. It is low on their priority to relocate. It's a single pole. Not uncommon at all.
I got you. Thank you. Any other question from the council? Councilmember Hopkins?
Has there been any discussion with the homeowner yet about?
Yeah, so I, I enjoyed the power met with them once this past summer uh, to let them know that there's going to be a guy wire is going to move from point A to point B. And of course, they were not happy with that, but what can I say?
How long does it take, do you think?
Um, the actual installation, relocation is one day, maybe two to move the pole over. The guy wire is put in a day or two after the pole goes in, so it's real quick. But the guy wire is going to have to put, just like there's a guy wire out there now tied down on the private property. It's just going to be moved over by ten or fifteen feet.
So while they're moving it.
Because the pole is being moved.
Do the homeowner lose power?
No, 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 no. The guy wire is to support the pole.
Okay. I got you.
But why are we moving it?
We're moving it because we have an ease about at the intersection of Wagner and uh, and Roland.
All right, thank you. All right, I think that's straightforward. Any other questions from the council? Anybody register to speak on this? All right, anybody from the city hall? Please go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Herbert again, Herbert Clark. Uh, I, I just want to make a gesture. It, it's just. I'm just amazed over how Clarkston are able to take what real estate we do have. We're able to make it work within the confines of what we have to work with. Uh, uh, and I'm looking at all the internal changes. And I think it's a wonderful thing just to see that happen and working with the confines of our budget, uh, confines of the federal monies, uh, uh, also being able to, to beautify our city even better, but just in the confines, we have a lot of uh, being in the real estate, I know that sometimes other properties have to be acquired to get the same thing done. But uh, I, I think uh, although the data involved in this project, in this Splot project. Uh, I recommend you to work on what you have to work with and to make these changes work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Go ahead, man.
Samina Osman, again in the. So thank you so much for what you are doing in this city and doing this road, and I appreciate what he's doing, city engineer. And I think in Roger, Roger Street. I was in my neighbor's house. There was a pressure. There was no speeding. There is no speeding over there. And everybody was saying, thank you for this. Not like before. Before was very bad speed. When the young kids drive and they don't care about their life and people's life. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any, are there any questions from the council before we move forward? All right. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. I guess we're going to have to need you to stand there again. All right, G three, um, to review and discuss Splot four B and C Roland Street Diet, um, Road Diet. Uh, change order request for storm line installation at eight forty seven and eight fifty one Roland Street. Uh, go ahead, sir.
So Roland Street uh, was built back, it was dirt from, from our research. Um, as we, as you know, we're putting together an interpretive panel, which is done for Mel Street and for the history of the trolley uh, through Clarkston. So I know a lot about Roland Street. Uh, I've seen a lot of pictures and I know the history of Roland Street and the trolleys. Uh, and so I also know that when that road was built in nineteen hundred, nineteen oh five, nineteen ten. Um, that there was no drainage infrastructure or very limited drainage infrastructure on that road. And so what you have, if you go out there and look at it, it does not require an engineer to do this. You really have issues following three issues. You've got two catch basins. Catch basins are what's along the side of the road to catch water coming off the road. Water goes into those catch basins and it goes into a stormwater pipe and takes that stormwater someplace else. So you have two of those along the entire length of Roland Street. Eighteen hundred feet. You have all of the granite curb, at least before we started raising it, all the granite curb was flush with the roadway. From cars running over the curb, there's no concrete under the granite curb, so cars run over it. And over a period of a hundred years, that granite curb gets mushed into the ground. And also you have most probably seven overlays of asphalt on Roland Street over the last eighty years. And so you also have a lot of parking. Asphalt parking driveways behind the homes that face Church Street. So you have all that asphalt, nowhere to capture it or very few places to capture it. And then the fourth thing is, if you walk out there, you notice that there are three driveways where over the years, the homeowners began to raise that driveway, the entrance in the driveway higher and higher and higher and higher. The reason they did that is because all the water would come off the road. There's no place to capture it and go people down people's driveways. So you have a really poor drainage system. And so knowing all of that, we tried to come up with some temporary solutions. You know, we raised the curb line. That must probably caused a little bit of additional runoff down people's driveways. Because it at, because actually the water runs along the curb now instead of across people's properties. So knowing all of that, we try to have some, some solutions such as capturing the water in a grate system, a grate, steel grate along the front of the driveway to cap some of that runoff. When, when I suggested that and when I looked at the numbers, uh, I thought it might work. It was marginal from an engineering standpoint, but we thought we'd give it a try. It worked a little bit until you had about a twenty five year storm event and all that water still went down the driveways. So the only way, and I tried to avoid this from day one when we did this design, to put in catch basins to capture the runoff from the road and convey that water from catch basin to catch basin to the existing storm line that exists out there. And so that's the only way to solve the problem. Um, and so that cost is in here. To install two catch basins and eighteen inch, about two hundred feet or so of eighteen, of eighteen inch diameter HDPE, high density polyethylene pipe. That's within right of way. It will be built within right of way. Uh, it'll capture that stormwater and convey it over to an existing storm line that runs down a gentleman's side yard. So that's the cost in here to construct two catch basins and to install two hundred feet of eighteen inch pipe.
And do we have like uh, images of um, like flooding or anything? Did it ever happen?
No, I don't have to have images. I can see what has happened over the years.
I'm just saying, did we ever have any flooding incidents?
Oh, complaints?
Yes.
I have not received any complaints. Maybe Public Works has.
Okay.
But the other thing we also do, we also raise the driveway. So we reconstructed the driveways, all the driveways along Roland Street within right of way to concrete. Look really good, but those three driveways, we actually had to put a because the steepness of the driveway on one of them, we actually had to go back off of right of way and get some easements to build a driveway so where there's a like, a slight bump in the driveway and gradually go into the existing property down further in their driveway. So it's, it's a problem. It's very obvious. It's a problem. You don't have to see, you don't have to get complaints from anybody to know there's a problem.
I got you. And this is just basically only this two properties?
Yes. Actually, the third one, but the third one's not going to be, is not going to be um, affected. It's going to be affected positively, but it's not going to be in their yard.
All right.
And actually, the work is all within right of way. It's going to be in people's front yards. You won't see it, but it's there to capture stormwater.
Any question from the councils? All right, any, go ahead, sir.
One question on the uh, you mentioned you're using a, it sounds like a vert, some kind of PVC pipe?
HDPE, high density polyethylene.
Okay, what's a typical lifespan of that material? I know with PVC.
Over a hundred years. It's longer than concrete and metal.
Okay.
The reason you don't use that within right of way on the road is if you put it too far below the bottom of the asphalt, heavy trucks over a period of time might crack it. But if you put it far enough down, you can put it within right of way. Governments use it for very deep kind of fills on roadways.
So this is going to go underneath.
On shoulder of the road.
Right underneath the yard line.
Behind the curb.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody register?
No, sir.
All right, anybody want to speak on this at the city hall? All right, we're going to move forward and we're going to go to G four. Which is, huh, again, it's you. Review, discuss Splot eight Market Street um, sidewalk in resurfacing and Carol Park resurfacing, uh, change order requests for Market Street resurfacing and sidewalk project with unincorporated DeKalb County and the construction cost associated with the continuation of the project extended into unincorporated DeKalb County. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
So I prepared this in advance, the Keb County giving you unless Miss Quai has the agreement from DeKalb. Um, I said, let's go ahead and get this approved by council so that when you do get the agreement from the Keb County, you can just sign off on it and be done. So this is really phase one, and that's why I brought it to council to go ahead and get approval and move on. And because you know, I think the mayor received a, and I received uh, an email and the mayor received a call from Commissioner Bradshaw indicating that it was approved. But we don't have the MOA.
Yes.
I gave the MOA. I drafted it. I gave it to the county. I don't know if it was ever sent in. So Juan, I don't know if you ever received it or not.
I have not.
Okay.
Thank you. And uh, did uh, have you seen this, Mr. Quinn? Is the agreement sufficient?
Uh, yes, I looked at what Mr. Kaiser said some time ago and it, it uh, meets with my approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, see none. Anybody uh, register to speak on this?
No, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right, see none. Anybody want to speak on it from the city hall? All right, we're going to move to G five, which is um, twenty uh, review, discuss the Georgia Department of Transportation, G dot twenty twenty two local maintenance and improvement grant, LMEG award and proposed project. Uh, Ms. Cowie?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. Annually, local and county governments are presented with a LMEG, which is the local maintenance and improvement grant allocations based on the total centerline, road miles and population. The twenty twenty two LMEG allocations for the City of Clarkson is in the amount of ninety one thousand six hundred dollars and forty five cents with a required thirty percent match from the city of twenty seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and fourteen cents. And Mr. Kaiser is here. If you have any additional questions about our grant allocation.
Thank you. And by the way, so the, the um, what is it? The, the money that the city have to come?
The matching funds.
The matching funds. Um, does that also apply to all the previous grants? Do they have matching grant?
For the L men, I think Councilwoman Hopkins asked about the grant funds earlier.
Okay. So um, so are we okay on the budget um, for all the um, the years, previous years uh, in terms of having sufficient funds to cover the?
The matching funds?
The matching funds?
As we know now, and Mr. um, Dethnall can um, support me on this, um, as we did answer earlier about our twenty twenty one budget, we had rollover from our other previous projects that that money was allocated in our current budget. So that will be the same. So once we use these funding, the, the funding resources for this allocation, we would have the matching funds. Correct, Mr. Dethnall, to match for this LMEG allocations for twenty twenty two.
All right, I just want to make sure since it adds every year, we get another fund and other, and we don't use it. And that could be substantial. But anyway, thank you. I don't, any, any questions from the council? Go ahead, man.
Well, I, I didn't bring my paperwork, but there are some grants out there that would support all of this without using ARPA.
This is not our.
Okay, this is just using our budget.
Yeah, this is a.
Because there's some grants out there that would allow us as a city to get these, this equipment.
Right.
And it costs us nothing.
Yeah, I mean.
We're on G five, Councilwoman Johnson.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm on G five.
G five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So we are on G five. We're talking about the LMEG project. So you're good. Any other questions?
I guess I just have a quick comment that I am excited about this particular project because I actually brought this up to the previous city manager. That doesn't make sense to have the really nice pocket park and then just a dirt path next to it so they can make sense, connect the sidewalk there. The other thing I was going to say, this is to this, but I know that there's a lot of local uh, infrastructure grants available under the infrastructure plan that's just in pass. And I was curious, I don't know if this is a question for Larry Kaiser, for the city manager, if the city has a plan to apply for those various grants that may be available under the future infrastructure plan.
Yes, so let me address that. This is what I do for a living for the last thirty years. So Shwana and I have had a conversation about this. Um, there are, the only way that you can fund projects with federal funds is to introduce it into Atlanta Regional Commission Transportation Improvement Program. The only way you can actually get funding or be eligible for funding is if you have the project in a local transportation plan. Uh, and, and so based upon that and based upon the fact that we have not started any design work on remaining Splot projects other than Mel Avenue, and I can have a conversation about Mel Avenue and the two signals at Church and East Ponds. So we have no projects that we can submit to Atlanta Regional Commission on this go around next year, possibly, but not this year. There are no Splot projects that are eligible to be submitted or be considered for federal funding.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
So what would we do? Do we need to do anything? Does the council need to come to you with ideas? What do we need to do to start having ideas for next year?
Yeah, so, so the projects that are remaining on the Splot program. Mel Avenue, the request for proposal went out from Mel Avenue, which is signalize East Ponds at Mel and Church at Mel and relocate Northern Avenue. That was a Splot project. I prepared a request for proposal for design services. The bid opening is December, actually, we just came in. The bid just came in. And we're going to review them, present to council in January, the highest ranked engineering firm, and they're going to proceed on their merry way for about two years to get a, to get the design done, CSX permitting. Those are all, both roads are all within CSX right of way. We all know the problem we had with the streetscape project with CSX. Uh, and then once we get that design done, we'll be able to submit that to Atlanta Regional Commission for federal funding on the construction side, not the right of ways, like construction side. There should be no right of way acquisition because a relocation in Northern is within existing the Keb County right of way. So remember that. That parking lot that's out there now for U-Haul it is owned by the Keb County. Well, when the city annex, maybe it's city property now, but it is not private property. So when we relocate Northern to tie into Mel. Unfortunately, that's, you know, it has to be done. And so the other project is Glendale, Glendale at East Ponds. That's a Splot project. Turn lanes on Church uh, within CSX right of way. And the third Splot project is a North Indian Creek Road Diet. That's a big one. And so next year. That's a big one. And so next year, we will apply for what's called scoping funds through Atlanta Regional Commission to allow us to look at the best alternatives for a road diet from county line to the creek on Montreal Road. That length of roadway has always been a Splosh project, and, and so it's, it'll be considered as a road die, but we have to do some planning and engineering first, which will start next year. One of the things that I've talked to DeKalb County about the last couple of years is, it really makes no sense to stop it at the county city line. Makes a whole lot of sense to continue that road diet all the way over to Memorial Drive. And so we're trying, Juan and I are working with DeKalb County to try to get our minds together, so that when DeKalb, when we start our planning study next year for that Splosh project, that we can hopefully have them come on board, and they pay for their piece, we pay for our piece. We have one joint project, because if you have one joint project between a city and a county on a road diet, guaranteed federal funding, no doubt whatsoever. And so, but that's, that's a long range project, which is why we haven't started on it yet, because it's, it's a little bit complicated, a little complicated. Hope that helps. So we have really three Splosh projects, Councilman, left.
And I mean, I, I think all kind of grants are definitely welcomed. And if they require preparation in terms of engineering and projects, I guess that's where we could start to help.
All right.
I would like to eventually do one for the Greenway, if it's possible, along the creek. If that's, I don't know what the council needed to do to get that.
Very doable, but remember, whenever you apply, so we can apply for a grant for that. Problem is, you've got to find that twenty percent match. So you can do the, you can do the planning and design work, get that on the shelf ready to go. But then, when the federal money, so when you apply for federal funds, that kind of project is a multimillion dollar project, and you got to find twenty percent.
Great. Thank, thank you. All right. Any other questions from the council? Anybody registered online?
Mr. Metz.
All right. Anybody from the Medfords?
Yes. So I live nearby this area, and I can definitely vouch for the need for an additional sidewalk right here. It's kind of odd how the sidewalk at the pocket park just ends. And you can see the trail where people walk beside Church Street. It's pretty obvious where the dirt is. People just keep walking. So connecting the sidewalk from Church Street to Lovejoy is going to help increase safety, because some, some people end up walking in the road right there. It's kind of dangerous. So definitely connecting this little portion, it also is kind of a, an appearance issue. So we had this lovely path, which I absolutely love, ride it all the time. And when you come across the railroad track, we're coming up with two eighty-five, you see the path along the side, and then it just kind of disappears just fine. It goes back behind the, the houses there. But then you see people walking on the side of the road in the dirt, and then the sidewalk kind of just reappears at Lovejoy in front of the car wash. And it's just this weird, disjointed, disconnective, odd kind of, I don't know, dystopian-ness that runs through there. So simply connecting this, I think, will be a great kind of fix up to that little spot. It's a great, it's a great place to walk. Beautiful shaded spot with some trees and a nice little place to walk on there. But having that additional piece of sidewalk, I think, is a great application for this, for this grant. So highly supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I mention one thing real quick?
Please.
Walk is very important, and I want to say this, so, so I'm very clear about this. We've got some really nice trees out there. So we did some measurements from the face of the tree, there's like five of them, six of them, face of the tree to the back of the existing granite curb. That distance is about five to six feet. So here's what we're going to do. I don't believe any trees had to be removed, which is a great thing, right? What we're going to do is, we're going to have a pervious rubber sidewalk to allow water to penetrate into the ground, not do any grading at all around the critical root zone. And so we're going to have a, so if it's kind of strange looking, it is. You're going to have concrete, and then you have a rubber sidewalk, which you see on paths all the time, right? So we're going to have that on two of those trees. The other three or four trees, as you get closer to Lovejoy, we're going to go behind the trees within right away, CSX right away, and avoid the trees altogether and not have it behind the curb. So you're going to have a sidewalk that goes like this, and then it's going to go behind the trees and then tie into Lovejoy. So just be aware that if you see something weird, that's what we're going to be doing out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom register besides?
Ms. Hood.
Ms. Hood, go ahead, please.
Yes, am I, excuse me, am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am. Quiet, proceed.
A question about the realignment of Northern Avenue where the truck rental place is. And Mr. Kaiser said that that property there in the dry, in the parking lot is owned by DeKalb County or City of Atlanta, but nonetheless, it is public right of way, not private property. Has the business owner been notified of the city's plans? I, I would be surprised if they don't try to take legal action. Because this will significantly affect their business. And I guess my question is, if there is going to be legal action on this, could it be done sooner rather than later, so that we don't get to the point where we have plans and funding, et cetera, and are ready in construction? And then find out that we have to be delayed by legal action?
So, Ms. Hood, let me respond to that. DeKalb County had a set of plans to do this ten years ago. U-Haul was there then. David Pelton, Transportation Director for DeKalb County, and Patrice Keeter, Assistant Director, had conversations with the manager of that U-Haul about a decade ago. I had a conversation with somebody on site about five years ago when the PATH Foundation built the PATH, when it was still in DeKalb County. There's an old red house there. It was a car, used car place. House was torn down, PATH was built. Mr. Ed McBrayer with PATH Foundation and I had a conversation with the manager at that time of U-Haul. Basically reminding them that the county allowed them to use public right of way for parking forever. And they were very aware at that time that that was public right of way. So to your point of trying to have an answer early on, that's the reason why we are starting the design work. We're going to have to get an alignment first. Once we have an alignment, then we'll begin to prepare right of way plans. We're about most probably six to eight months away from actually having something to show council in terms of a conceptual alignment and showing impacts to that, that particular property. So we'll do it as early as possible.
Well, here's my concern.
I'll give you another thirty more seconds. Can you make it short, please?
I certainly will. But conversations of some time ago about the ownership of that property is not the same as a, an official notice from the city that would then begin the process of establishing clearly and perhaps without legal action, we're going to do this. And I think that from the standpoint of documenting this information, I think that might be a good idea to have the city attorney determine the steps that need to be taken as soon as possible so that we don't end up in a lengthy court case that could delay this project.
Thank you, sir. And I would strongly encourage you to put it on writing, and I think email it to us. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
I do need to make this point. Very important. Very important.
City attorney, because this would, would, I'd be surprised if they're going, if they're not going to try to claim some-
Ms. Hood, I can't hear you clearly, plus you are way past your time. So I would really strongly encourage you to write it down and email it to the council or to the, to the city manager. Thank you.
I was strongly advised that we just don't send a letter, and here's a reason why. You've got to have a set of right of way plans, even if it's draft, preliminary, before we have any conversation with the property owner on what is theirs and what's not there. So once those draft right of way plans are prepared, then go for it at that point.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on, I mean, sorry, is there anybody else who signed up? Mr. Moore, go ahead.
Yes. The, that is a, a great idea to get your plans in order. That's, that's how I got involved in the city originally, was that there was an annexation of English Oaks. And there were some issues that were brought up with the, with the city and with the property. And the way they were addressed were inefficient, and I ended up having to spend several thousand dollars in attorney's fees to, to restore my property rights. And it was after the dust settled from that, I was asked to be on planning and zoning. But the road diet down at Memorial Drive, that's something that I had proposed back in twenty eleven, and they did the road diet in twenty fourteen. And that idea was based on a engineering study on part of North Indian Creek by Thrift Town in two thousand and nine, I think it was. And I, I think it's important that, that we go back through the list of items highlighted in the Active Living Initiative. We identified that stretch of Church Street. Back in two thousand and ten, we identified Market Street for sidewalks. So a lot of this stuff is, is there. And if anybody would take the time to read through that and reassert their concerns about certain issues, I think that would be of a big benefit to the, to the city as the built environment and public safety and pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, mister.
All right. Anybody in the hall want to speak? Okay, go ahead, sir.
I heard the clerk again. I'm a simple person, and I always say that. I love simplicity. I see what's going on right now, all the proposals, the Splosh programs. The way that this gentleman, this gentleman explained everything, he did it in legalities. He did it from, with cooperation, with cooperations from residents. The way he formed everything, or where everything is formed, I didn't see anything that, that that needed a contract to do, or he did it within a way where it didn't, I should need a contract for it to get performed, if just by community involvement. The ladies that, that did an agreement to do certain things, you know, as long as it didn't impede their driveway. You know, that was still, you know, they didn't, the city, the way the city is doing it, didn't really need a contract to do that, because you didn't infringe on that person's rights. So the other ways that he was describing is that when things get done, you do it where you don't need to, obviously, we have a, have a, have legal advice from our, our city attorney. You know, if anything was going to be not legal, and I'm quite sure he would step up and say that, and work with the city manager. But what I'm hearing so far is just Clarkston residents still being working, being good community members that don't need contracts. And I think that we can continue to move on to do things that don't warrant a contract, because sometimes, as you were saying, if you, if, if a person gives something or gives you permission or says it's okay by them, and then you come back, you got to have a contract, they might change their tune. Because I know myself, it really think, if I tell somebody something, and then they say, well, I got to have a contract in order to do this. Well, they say, I changed my mind, and I don't want to sign no contract. But if it's something that doesn't need a contract, I would suggest proceed on it and don't, don't alienate people by asking for a contract if it does not require a contract. You know, just being, we just being community-based, staying friendly with our community. We don't want to alienate people with all these contracts, because they may change their mind, or it might be bounced.
Thank you, sir. All right. I see none other speakers. Any other council member? All right. We're going to move to the next agenda item, which is G six. And this is introduced by me and Councilmember Hassan to review and discuss allocating ARPA funds not to exceed an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of outdoor calisthenic gymnasium equipment. And the idea came to me as I was in a park in Atlanta that, that has similar equipments at their park, and they're spaced out throughout the park. And they have like pull-up bars here, they would have push-up bars a little distant from one. So in a way, it's all outdoor, and that really perfectly fits in in, in terms of putting it in our, our local park as well. And this would certainly help in terms of our public health of our community, and also it would definitely make more outdoor activity for our community. Currently, our park, I mean, somebody can run and jog and walk, but we don't have any, anything, any activity for adults besides for children at the park. And it would be great to have additional some, some kind of outdoor activity for our residents. For those who come with their children, they could do their pull-ups, push-ups while they're watching their children play, you know, at the park. So, and that would definitely add more value to, to the park and to our public health, I strongly feel. And this would definitely help in terms of even the future health of our community. And this is eligible to be, to be, to be used from ARPA funding. As it says, it's to support of investing in improving outdoor spaces like parks are eligible funds as a response to the public health emergency. And this, the amount of money, I like the way the city manager actually prepared the, the draft by this outdoor fitness company. And you see the details of every expense of, to everything that, that we will be purchasing. And it includes so many things like chest press, dome climbers, dual exercise bars, just to name a few. Park bench, pull-up bars, push-up stand. I mean, this is like, it goes on and on. And this is pretty much for about, for about fifteen thousand, thirteen thousand dollars, I would say. I'm not sure if it includes installation, but overall, though, this would not exceed more than twenty-five thousand dollars. And is there anything you want to add, Councilmember Hassan?
No.
All right. Any questions from the council?
I'll just have one. Where, where do you, where we put it? Up top?
It, it will be everywhere. So like, if, if it can be everywhere, and this doesn't have to be any specific order. I mean, this is just like, it's like play, you know, like, it looks like playground, park, and you put a, like a pull-up bar at one place, and then you put up a bicycle somewhere else. And you would have it spaced out throughout the park, and somewhere you would have a push-up little bar. And in another place, you would have chest press. Or, so this is like small little bars, but they're all spread out throughout the park. And they are, they are not, you're not, we're not going to change anything on the park just for that. I mean, we're just going to add more fun activities for adults. Yes, ma'am.
I actually had this conversation with our friendly neighborhood park ranger, and he was recommending we do a trail around the field on the west side of Mylan Park, at the top of the park. But I would probably recommend sending this to the Environmental Committee, because I do think it ties in. because I do think it ties in with, uh, our desire to have park management and to have some sort of centralized planning rather than sort of a half-hazard approach to it.
Excuse me, half hazard?
Well, I mean, just, you know, just scatter them about. I mean, to have a trail and a plan for how the park's gonna develop.
I mean, I, I think, uh, having a trail is, that'll be a great addition, but I don't think this, uh, does not stop us from adding a trail to it. This is basically will add more, um, activity for adults. And we can still put, um, uh, a trail in there. I mean, um, it would not stop us from putting a trail.
I think what she means is just not scattered it all over, but just.
Just have a plan.
Plan, you know, with a plan, you know.
I mean, are we talking like?
I'll, I'll send you pictures. I'll, I'll send you my own pic. I will, I'll add it to the, okay. This is an example of something like that you could do with, uh, I mean, an outdoor.
Oh dear. Okay, that's ugly. I'm sorry about that. That's ugly. I, um, there's one down in, um, Clayton County International Park. I was down there.
It's not gonna be exactly like that. It's just an example.
They have, they have a raised wooden boardwalk, um, across the lake and a, a path. Actually, it's path foundation and they have scattered along the path several of those exercise stations. They're more natural looking. It's not like bright blue plastic, but you know, they look like they belong in a park. I'm not, uh, averse to the idea, but I just.
I got you.
Like it in a sort of organized, coordinated.
Organized, where it's located.
I mean, the idea of putting it sparsely is.
Yeah, you don't want it to be like you're in.
We don't wanna have a gathering or something. This is not for that purpose. So, you would have, uh, you know, a slide here and then you would have monkey bars on the other side. So, this is the same concept. This is just for adults. So, I don't, I mean, we could still have the trail. I really am totally for it. But I really feel like this might be a great time to put this and implement it. And it doesn't really require a lot of, uh, you know, heavy lifting and putting, this is just, um, we're talking about, uh, light, uh, exercise equipment that does not require, um, much of, uh, permanent fixture or something like that. So, we could always, um, if we don't like them, I mean, if we don't like the color, I'm not sure. We can paint it or a different color. I'm not sure about that. But my point is, I think this is a great idea. I'll show you more pictures that I took from the park in Atlanta. And I mean, the other cities, Alfreda has a, a calisthenic park. Um, so this is not really a novel idea, but I just thought of it as I saw it. I'm like, why we don't have this similar activities for our adults? And I actually, recently, I started, um, doing this, uh, pull-ups. And this is a great exercise. Um, if somebody does five pull-ups a day, that actually adds a lot of benefit to your body. So, and I, I'm pretty sure I'll be one of the people who'll be using those pull-up bars, um, and.
Choose yourself.
Yeah. No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, but, um, I mean, this is really, um, just an addition for, for already the park that's already existing. We're not gonna have an. And we could continue and expand this idea in other parks in the future, even in pocket parks. It does not require a lot of space to do this. So, we could have, um, pull-up bars in another place as well in the future. So, once we see how people are using it, this one at, uh, Mylon Park, for example, we could continue and expand this throughout the city, throughout our public property. And I, I, I really would definitely love to, if we could do it sooner, sooner than wait. I mean, we don't have no reason to wait. We can really implement it and educate our residents our benefits of outdoor activities. That's pretty much simple as that. Any other question? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, no, um, I think this is a great idea. Um, I like the idea of expanding it. You know, you can almost think of it sort of a tour of Clarkston. You know, if there's some way to, to advertise it where you have different parks and maybe, maybe highlight different aspects of the community's history as well. Um, I did have a quick question. Are you wanting to move this forward to vote next week?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I do think, uh, in order to vote on it, it would be helpful for me to have, and you may already have this already, um, you know, in time for next week, just sort of a general idea. Uh, you know, even if it's just sort of, hey, here are the areas of where we might, uh, put the park. Um, you know, and, and actually have it concrete. And, you know, just so we kind of have an idea of where it's gonna go and not comfortable voting on something that is a plan that we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars on. Um, you know, without having a general idea of where it is. I don't think you have to go into the detail on what color is the slide and, you know, but just sort of where physically the location should be.
I can't, I can't tell you that, sir, because I, I'm, I am proposing to have this. And I will leave definitely to the, our public parks department to recommend where e- everything fits. And I, I can definitely, uh, work with the council to make sure we pass it. But once we pass it, I think that's the city manager how to implement it and using our staff. And we definitely gonna consult with, uh, some of our residents if they would like to, I mean, to see how it's, uh, how it is implemented. But, I mean, I can't really tell you, oh, we're gonna have pull-up bars next to the bathroom or we're gonna have this. I mean, it doesn't really matter, honestly, where you put it. So, if you wanna recommend it, I strongly, I, I would love that. I'd love that to go with the council and what do you, would you like to? And we can, once, yeah, we'll get together, we can.
Make a plan.
I mean, this is not really, uh, we're not talking about, um, you know, something that's hard to move. And if somebody don't like it, it's always, we can move it and put it somewhere else.
The, this equipment is a little bit hard to move. I mean, if we're not moving it.
Not necessarily.
Larry, would you be moving that for us or?
Yeah.
You're a strong guy, right? Would you be moving the equipment for us if we decided to move it or? Yeah, you gotta pick up truck, right? Yeah.
When I, I, I think, um, you know, I wonder, would you consider, uh, you know, the vote being more direct to staff, you know, we can kind of earmark this as potential, maybe not specifically allocate it, but maybe direct the staff to come up with a plan.
That's exactly what it is.
But, but instead of dedicating the money directly where we're executing it, come up with a plan that the council can then vote on. Obviously, I wouldn't be a part of that vote, but, um, just so there's something a little more concrete. Uh, it sounds like Councilwoman Hopkins did have some concerns in terms of the details of it at the location.
I'm just.
Maybe it needs to go to committee.
It's all about the execution.
All right, okay. I mean, uh, I think we can definitely, uh, I, I mean, I really don't see this contagious, uh, issue because, um, um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna allocate certain amount of money not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. That would include equipment and installation. And we already have seen equipments and this equipments, we might end up narrowing it down. So, it just is up to the city manager to implement it. All we wanna do is if you, if we could put in two pull-up bars, I don't care. I'm fine with it. But I would like to see if we could do more, but I honestly want us to start, you know, encouraging people to, to, uh, that's all right. Your excuse. Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. All right. So, the, the thing is, um, I think we, we can certainly, uh, help our staff in terms of, but the idea is just to allocate that money and let the, you know, our city manager and the staff and with the help of Public Works implement it. I mean, we're not gonna decide where we put, uh, uh, the playground for children. Do we decide where we put the slide? We don't do that. So, this is not really the council's thing. So, as a policymaking, we tell, you know, we have professional people that we consult to put it where it fits. So, uh, we could take the recommendation of the, the company where we'll put it. But I think at the end of the day, this is not really, uh, gonna be a, a big issue where people are gonna be mad because we put a pull-up bar here, not there. So, I, I don't really see no issue. So, I think we are ready to vote on this and, um, uh, and implement it soon.
For clarification?
Yeah.
So, we are going to move forward to vote and the allocated amount of funds. Is there a specific amount that you would like to direct staff to begin with or is there maximum?
We could allocate twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the maximum. And it would be up the purview of the city manager, which is you, to, to, um, to decide, you know, what goes to what. But, um, at least if we could, um, invest in minimum of ten thousand dollars on this project, I'll be very happy and I think that'll be a great start. And from there, we could, in the future, if we fit it, if we see this is, you know, people are using these things and people are actually exercising more than before. And then we could continue and put it more of, I mean, more, and we can consider looking at other spots as well. Yeah, but, uh, does that help? Okay.
So, we have Ms. Um, Metford.
All right, Mr. Metford, go ahead, sir.
And Ms. Metford.
All right.
Um, I guess I'll start. I have to say, as somebody who uses Mylon Park on pretty much a weekly basis, um, where you put that equipment matters a lot. If you guys are gonna put pull-up bars and major workout equipment next to the girls restroom and I have to have my five-year-old go by there, I'm, I'm gonna care. So, will every other parent that I know of, of small children. We will care where this goes. So, I really think Laura is exactly spot-on with the recommendation that this go to the environmental committee. Let the environmental committee discuss it and get a great plan. This is a good idea, but it needs to be vetted and thought out more. You can't just say, oh yeah, we're just gonna put it wherever it fits and go on like that. I think Laura's right. Move it to the environmental committee, discuss it, get a plan of where this should go, incorporate it with some trails, so you're not interfering with the children on the playground. Most adults don't wanna work out over children playing anyway. So, this would allow it, if you give it some plans, an opportunity to really be successful. The other thing I think you need to take a look at is the actual current state of the playground equipment in Mylon Park. If there's ARPA money for fixing up parks, guys, we have, uh, drums that don't work. We have equipment that's falling apart. The wood chips are not up to code on the playground. I really think you should take, you know, some of this money and spend it toward investing in the park that we have so that the children that use it can use it safely and use it well.
All right, thank you. Any other comment?
Uh, hold on. Now, that's my turn. So, uh, I once visited a park in Asheville that had an outdoor gym and I thought it was absolutely awesome. Um, so ideally, we would actually encourage people to use it, maybe through social media or, uh, once things get back to somewhat normal, uh, group workouts, be kind of a cool thing. Uh, maybe we'll work with some local groups to maybe get an activities list going or maybe even challenge to certain achievements. Like people could run like a ten K or do like a, uh, an exercise regimen and like click off, hey, I did these things, I did these things. Kind of gamify it a little bit, make it fun. Uh, but definitely, I, I'm gonna agree with Laura on this. It's gonna be, it needs to be woven into the fabric of Mylon so it kind of looks natural. Um, I'm even picturing like a, a, either a running trail of some sort. Uh, I've seen it done this way where the, the exercise equipment was at stations. And so, you went through a circuit. And when I used to work out many moons ago, uh, doing a circuit was a great thing because it keeps you, keeps you going and keeps you know what's coming next. So, having that natural progression of go to this station, to this station, to this station. Um, making sure everything kind of matches the area, uh, so it doesn't look like somebody mysteriously dropped an art project in the middle of the forest, you know, for a, a piece of exercise equipment. But, uh, I think this has real potential. I think it's great. I'd really like to see it planned out a little bit more before we dedicate money. Uh, I don't think that's too much of a, a request, um, just to make sure we know what we're asking for and what we're getting is really what it is. And maybe even ask some of the people who do use Mylon Park a lot, what they think of it. So, this is a great idea. I just think it needs a little bit more baking to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Not on.
On the Zoom. Okay. Anybody else at, at the city hall would like to speak? Thank you.
But I also wanted to mention.
Comments from the police.
Um, Mr. Vice Mayor, that we, um, Mr. Kaiser also has a base map of the park when it was renovated in twenty thirteen, um, when we did the renovations during that time. So, um, all the historical information that we can provide for this, um, process, we will be glad to assist.
What was that? He has what?
A base map of the park from the renovations that were, that took place in twenty thirteen.
So, we have a base map was prepared to an all of the recreational equipment that was installed in two thousand thirteen. So, when the sidewalk been installed, all of that's there. So, it's a good beginning point. Actually say if you want three pieces here or two pieces here, you have a good base map.
Yeah, that would be incredibly helpful. Appreciate it. Thank you for that.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yeah. Whatever I'm going to do with the, the Mylon Park with the, what do you call, like a gym? Is it a gym? I didn't understand very well.
It's like a gym where people could do like sit-up, pull-up, or they use their own body weight to exercise. So, that we don't have like, we're not gonna have.
Threadmill or anything.
You know, threadmill or, well, we might have like bikes, but anyway, yeah.
That is a good idea, but the problem I'm concerned about the children, especially the, a lot of girls go there, change, uh, playing bask, I mean, what do you call, playing what you call tennis. And sometimes they are going without their parents. And, uh, so, I mean, without supervision. So, I don't think it will be safety unless there will be security over there.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, since we don't have any, any other last comments. Go ahead, sir.
No.
Okay, no, none. Okay. So, yes, go ahead, sir.
But it does something, it's called, we, okay. Um, so, uh, to the, to the point that was made in public comment on sort of the, the equipment, you know, the, the playground equipment that's in need of upgrade, would you consider maybe rolling that into sort of, you know, upgrade? It sounds, I have no idea if things are actually up to code, but maybe, maybe improve, you know, fix some of the broken equipment, the existing equipment that we have in addition to expanding this. And we can maybe talk through potentially adding some funding to that as well, you know. Uh, so I do like the idea of having a map, uh, you know, somewhere we can at least have a general idea. I don't think you have to pick the color of the slide, but, um, somewhere we at least have some kind of idea on, you know, the area that we're proposing this to happen. But then also having an upgrade and expand.
Okay. I think a good consensus, uh, we can build on this is where maybe we could actually, um, we could add this, the, 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 the recommendation, especially with the trail with it. And we could add, we can increase the funding by small amount. And, uh, that would help in terms of the trail, I mean, the like jogging trail or running trail. We could definitely incorporate it in the plan. And the other part is, we, we certainly still have the power, I mean, the city, um, staff have the power to use ARPA funds for, for like upgrading a park because that's outdoor activity. So, we, I mean, this, the city already still have the power. So, I think, uh, we can go ahead and, uh, have this conversation, um, offline with the city manager or we could do it through email. But we certainly, we still, we still can go ahead and improve the, you know, the park. And if the, if there is any equipment that's not working right now, we certainly can also. So, we don't really need to, you know, to put it on the agenda and all that. But we could increase the amount that way. That would help, uh, creating a trail. It put in those, uh, equipments. And we can reduce the equipments. It doesn't have to be too boy, too big or too much. So, if the people feel like, oh, this is too much, well, we could reduce it.
Just a pull-up bar.
Yeah, so. And, um, the third one is, um, so in a, improve the existing, uh, equipments. The second one would be add more new equipment for adults. And the third would be adding a trail. And, uh, we could certainly consider, uh, increasing the amount. For, instead of twenty-five thousand, we could make it fifty thousand. And, uh, uh, that could be, uh, used to study or to end it for, for, I don't know if it requires, uh, I mean, we gotta consult with somebody probably about how we can create that trail. But it sounds a great, I love that idea.
I, I think we're on a, just a general park upgrade and it just needs to be hammered out. Like you have a proper proposal to vote on that includes upgrade of the children's equipment, the playgrounds that are there, cleaning up the facilities. I, I, I don't know anything about the wood chips, to be honest with you, but look into it anyway. And then also get some new equipment for adult outdoor equipment and possibly trails. And park manager, maybe a planner for just this project. Like a professional park planner. It's a thought, but we can, we can put that together.
Yeah, I think that's doable. We can, we can talk. Yeah, I think that's doable. We can, we can talk about this. And I will continue the conversation on the phone, uh, with every council member and, uh, we can definitely move forward. I just have feel like, uh, we shouldn't really waste time because we need to, to move forward. And, uh, I mean, th- this COVID is not gonna be behind us. It's actually going before us. So we definitely, with all this new variant and all that, we need to move forward and, um,
Get outside.
Fix it and, yeah, I mean, get, uh, you know, get ourselves moving and, um, uh, I'll, I'll be one of those people, I should be that, to use it. And I, I like how our, you know, uh, esteemed, uh, is that sergeant? I'm not good with the titles. Okay, obviously, thank you. And, uh, um, and the police department can also, you know, collaborate and help us. And we could have some, you know, weekends, uh, where the police would compete with some young folks. It's, uh, if you go on YouTube, just calisthenics, you'll be amazed at some of these kids, how they do things. And it's not a lot of equipment. And this is just basic equipment, like, and they would do this great, like, exercise, acrobatics on these things. I don't encourage people doing acrobatics. Yes, yet, but I think, um, it, it has a strong potential. And we have a lot of young folks that wanna do some activities and, uh, this would be one additional thing. So anyway. All right, we need to move forward. I like that. All right. Next agenda item is G seven, which is to discuss creating a plaque to commemorate, to commemorate the mayor and the council members, past and present, that have, uh, supported the Streetscapes project. This was presented by Councilmember Johnson. And I also would definitely, uh, uh, speak a little bit on this. And, um, after we did the ribbon cutting for the Streetscapes project, I was surprised that it did not have any commemorated plaque placed anywhere within the city for the contribution of all the previous mayor or previous council members that have worked on this. This was like eight years project and, um, uh, I think we, we can still do it. I'm not sure about what exact location, but, um, normally every time we finish a project, um, like what we did at Friendship Forest, there would be a plaque that would tank all the, you know, all the, all the parties that were engaged, including the engineering part, the city managers and the city council and everybody. So, so that kind of, you know, is, uh, how we have done it, but, but we didn't do it for Streetscapes. I mean, we don't, we don't have any plaque or anything commemorating it, so memorializing it. So I think that that would be a great idea. I second Councilmember Johnson to do this, uh, but. Yes, go ahead. Can you got counsel? You got a question?
Yeah, no, go ahead. Are, are you done?
No, no, I'm done, yeah.
No, maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, everybody did his dues. So why do we need a plaque? I mean, only, you only give the black to the viewer when they die. Pardon me? I thought the black is just to remember somebody that passed away or something like.
No, 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 not necessarily. You know, how, i- i- like the Friendship Forest at the bathroom, there is a big plaque that actually is memorialized there, that's gonna be there as long as this place is gonna be there. And, um, I mean, that, that is the same kind of, um, thing we're gonna have.
They still never put a plaque with my name on it, on the bathroom?
Oh, it's not in the bathroom, sir. It's not. It's just in front of the building. Well, I think it's already.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm not for it.
Okay.
Okay.
I get it too.
Uh, any other comments?
Oh, yeah, just, I had one question, uh, if this goes to a vote, will you, uh, just the names of the previous council members be present on it or just any? Uh, just wanna make sure everyone's included so that if anyone who participated in the past, you know, it isn't included, they have an opportunity just to, to see it before it goes up, or is there a process that you have in mind for that?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not, and this was put in the agenda by, but I actually do agree with Councilmember Johnson. And, uh, I definitely do, uh, do recognize that we could do that. And, um, I did support it as well, so, and I still do support it. But, uh, uh, who are we gonna put names? I, normally we put the, the current council members every time we do things. But I didn't.
It's six times, it's, it's about eighteen since councils since.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. But anyway, so normally we put the current council. So, um, I don't know when we're gonna put it. So if we put it before January, it will be the current council, I guess. If we put it after January, it will be the council after that. So to make sure we have Perkins' name and Hassan's name, we might have to full, full forward the class down. Just kidding. But anyway.
On that then, uh, cause I think my, um, one of the things that I think makes this a great project is that it's a project that, that I think illustrates the, the positive governance that can happen when projects span multiple councils.
Yes.
And so even if it, I don't care if my name is honored or not, I didn't dig out any sidewalks. Um, you know, so even if it, you know, if the concern is we have thirty-seven names or something like that, you know, we don't wanna break some poor plaque maker's arm, you know, and, and put him out of a job. But, um, we could do something as simple as, you, you know, commemorating the collaboration, you know, and, and list the councils. And people can look up and see whoever was on it, uh, which I think your, your point is why we're spending money on a thirty-seven member, you know, you know, piece of metal. Um, when hopefully, you know, we're still around. Um, so that, that would be my suggestion is, you know, making sure that we do, well, understand the current thing. This is something that a lot of people have put hard work in. Um, I had, you know, devoted on some things, but I did not, I have not put in the sweat equity that other people have in, in terms of research and, and time into this. And so I'd wanna make sure those, uh, individuals were honored as well, if we were to do some kind of a, you know, commemorative plaque.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, by, by the way, I beg to differ. You definitely did contribute, uh, the time you were here. You supported and voted for every single plus project. So, uh, it's, it's, it's definitely, it should be appreciated as far as I'm concerned. But, um, this is just a timing matter, I think. So if we put it now, I think, uh, normally we usually put, uh, the current city council members. But we could make it in a way, this is, um, it wa- it, it was past span of different administrations in terms of mayors and council members. So we could include every single member. I mean, it's not gonna be very difficult to include different names.
Vice Mayor? I think it might be better if we just, I mean, I know it's sort of out of order, but discuss this at the council meeting next week when Councilwoman Johnson is here, since it was her.
Yes, I know.
Item and she's obviously not.
Well, I, I, I agree, Councilmember Hopkins, but since already put in the agenda, so we definitely have to discuss it, that's why. But I definitely respect Councilmember Johnson, uh, si- since he's not here, we, we're gonna also discuss the game, but we just don't wanna skip it and.
Yeah, we'll give her a chance for it.
Yeah, we will definitely give her a chance to speak with her.
And to move forward, um, Vice Mayor Yassib, I will, um, take it upon myself to get those draft, like, um, Councilman Perkins did say, that, um, supportive phrase, or to see how much it will be to put all thirty-seven or one hundred or ten names on there.
I get exhausted when we start.
It could be something as simple as the years, you know, that Streetscape had happened. So, um, I will be more than, um, happy to go and move forward with that. So we can just go ahead.
Mr. Kaiser, anyone add something?
Two thousand twelve to present. That is the duration of the project from the date that we did not lose the four million dollars of federal funding.
Yes.
Until now. And so that, that's the, and the reason we haven't done, uh, other ones on the previous ones, you know, we put one on the Amex, Mylum Park, the Friendship. Those were for a definitive period of time where you basically covered every mayor or council. And we had like eight or nine total. Streetscapes is from two thousand twelve to present.
Right. I got you. And in a way, uh, we definitely need to put it just like in that order. Yeah, all right. Any, there is no comments. Uh, well, anybody to sign in?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody wants to speak on this from the hall? All right. We're gonna move to the next agenda item, which is, uh, G. Uh, give me one second. G. Eight. You wanna skip more? Okay. Which is to discuss amending the current process of adding items to the, to a city council agenda by mayor and council members. All right. So this was, uh, introduced by myself and Councilmember Johnson primarily. And I wanted us to start, um, using the same model as an example. So I talked to, uh, um, I mean, I spoke with Councilmember Johnson a lot, a lot briefly, but, um, uh, I emailed and on the email it says, you know, I wanna also get more second, more than one person on this. And I actually received two people to second it. So that was basically four people who seconded the, the idea being put on the agenda. So just to put it on the agenda, it actually received four people's support. And the idea is, when you have an agenda item, already consensus built in it, where, um, there is actually a good understanding of the council, at least half of the council agrees on it, or at least two council members and mayor agrees on it, that has a very strong, good chance of passing the council and moving forward and getting voted on. But if the way we have it right now, just two council members can decide to put things on the agenda. And by the way, I'm not against two council members putting on the agenda. However, if there is no consensus, depending on what agenda item it is, it, it takes, it takes us a lot of time to discuss issues that doesn't have any consensus already built in it. So this would make the flow of agenda items smoother. And that would also make us, and force us to work together. Because we will not have only two council members working together. Instead, we will have the two council members plus the mayor or three council members working on different things and talking to each other on every agenda item that they wanna put in, in, on, on the city council work session or city council meeting. And that would help us move the process smoothly. And it takes three votes to, to approve anything, depending on if there is a split vote. So, uh, unless there is a split vote, then the mayor have to take one side or the other. So which means, um, if you have an agenda item with, uh, at least people willing to discuss it, more than three people willing to discuss it, or at least three people willing to discuss it out of seven, that makes it very easy to actually move forward. And this will take less time for our staff, less time for our city council. And a lot of issues that can be discussed at, um, at committee level, then that can still proceed with committees. Because every city council member is a member of committee. So that way, we could have more time for the council to discuss issues that have consensus built in them, instead of wasting time on issues that will never pass anyway. So if you have only two people support something, it will never pass if the, the other four don't support it. So instead of putting on the agenda without the support of, or at least without, uh, okay with at least three people, that would be waste of all our time. So, uh, the idea is to have a way of us working together. So that will, if, I mean, city council member was six of us, plus the mayor, seven of us. So if we can't find three people out of seven to work on something, I don't think it should come to the agenda. Because, but if there is a good agreement, or at least if people are okay to discuss it even, it doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna vote for it, but I'll be, at certain times, I've supported things, even though I'm not gonna vote for it, but I would still be okay to discuss it. So that's where, uh, I would love to see us move that way to, to go ahead and discuss things that we know we would love to discuss, instead of, um, just wasting everybody's time when we know that this is not worth even discussing. So this would just save us more time in terms of following on the agenda items. And, uh, it would help us also work together. So this has two purposes, to make us work together as the council, because, I mean, if I can't find two more people, either one council member and the mayor, to support, uh, an idea for a discussion, I shouldn't even bring it to the table. So that's all the idea. The idea is to make us, make us call each other, make us talk to each other. That way, we can put things on for the discussion and then we can either vote for it or against it. That's another story. So that's pretty much what, uh, uh, the proposal is. And I'll take comments from the council on this first. Or if you have any questions.
So I guess my concern is that I think part of the purpose of council is not to only discuss things that have consensus, but it's also to let different council members give their ideas. And it's possible things get brought on the agenda that aren't gonna pass. But I still think that's educational to the public because it gets people on the record. And they can decide in the next election, okay, I do like that they brought this up, I'm gonna vote for them, or I don't like that they brought this up, I'm gonna vote against them. So I think the purpose of discussion is not just to put something on that's a consent agenda, but it's also to let even minorities say, hey, this is what I would do if I had a few more votes. And it's also to let the majority say, no, we shouldn't do that. And the people can get more information by what's brought to the agenda, how people vote and make that decision in their election. So I guess I kind of think that, understand that, I, I do think it's a good idea to kind of make our processes more regular. So I support pretty much all of this, except I would say two instead of three, um, would be the one change. Well, no, what I'm saying, I, I know, that's what, that's what I'm saying is, I, I, this has been a rule ever since I've been in the council, ever since you've been in the council. I guess I don't see an urgent need to change it. If we wanna shorten the council meetings, I mean, there's a billion ways we could do that. We can shorten comment, we can not do resolutions. There's a lot of ways to shorten time if the worry is just time. And I, I think that the time is worth discussing. If two members of the council wanna discuss something that's part of democratic process, the rest of the council, if they don't agree with it, they can vote it down. And they can make the arguments and the people can decide in the election. So that, that, I, I agree with pretty much all of this, everything you say, except I would say two instead of three. And just keep the existing rule of two.
Well, it's, right now, it's actually two already. And the only thing I added is I actually made the mayor to be part of the discussion as well. So the mayor can also second two council members right now. So, so the idea is you could either have three council members, city council members, or two city council members plus the mayor.
So I would be okay with making it one city council member and the mayor or two city council members, but I, I don't think we should.
It is already like that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We should keep it like that, but we should regularize it with action, cause two twenty-six, as it currently is written, doesn't establish that clear rules. So I think that this is better to make it clear, except we should just leave it at two instead of three. But I, I very talked to Will, so I'll let the council.
I got you. And I mean, I, I totally respect your perspective, um, but I, I honestly, uh, I think the city council agendas are not platforms for campaign. I mean, so you're saying that, uh, if you could, somebody can vote for you or against you based on what you put on the agenda. I don't think that, that's a correct statement to me, honestly. I, I wanna put things on the agenda if I feel like it's gonna be helping the community. So, I mean, I'm not thinking about the next election at that point.
Of course, but I'm saying is that people can decide whether or not it helps the community. I mean, I personally call everyone in the council before I put something agenda and y'all know that.
And I've seconded you many times.
I know, and, and you do the same thing. So I'm saying, I don't, I'm not saying it's a bad idea to call everyone in the council. I try to call everyone in the council before I put something agenda, even if I don't think they're gonna vote for it, even if they're not gonna second me, I still talk to them about it. So I, I do think that's a good process. I just don't think that we need three in order to get that. I think we can still do that with two.
The idea of having three is that there is a good consensus, even if it's not even enough to, to get it, you know, whether it passes or not. But to discuss something, that would save us a ton of time because there is a lot of things that are put on the agenda that, um, are supported only by very minority of the council. And sometimes it was me, I was the minority sometimes. And, um, it never passed, it just, you know, we, we, we spent our time discussing something that was not gonna pass. So I don't think that would be, uh, an efficient use of, uh.
Every legislator does that, right?
Yes, go ahead, council member.
I'm one of the people that seconded this, but, um, at the same time, now I'm, I'm rethinking it a little bit. Just because I, I did something purely by accident today. So anybody, and I know who you are, and there's several who tried to call me today. I left my phone at home and I didn't realize till I was already at work. So I didn't get any of the normal phone calls I usually get on city council meeting day of people wanting to talk about stuff. As it turns out, I think I'm going to do that for every city council meeting from here till the end of my term, because I do have a day job. And I'm thinking when we put the requirement to have three people. And I'm thinking, when we put the requirement to have three people on it, first thing, over half of the things on our agenda today were put on with one person. And that's because the city manager or the engineer just say, okay, we, we gotta discuss this. Like, they don't have to have a second or a third to put something on the agenda, they just put it on the agenda, because it needs to be talked about, and it needs to be approved by. So what we're doing in effect is distancing ourselves from our constituents more than, you know, all of the city staff will have more power than we have. But the other thing is, it forces us to have these conversations to sell our ideas behind the scenes when the um, public doesn't know what the conversation's about. And I remember getting into this argument with a former mayor, because he said, you know, you don't just show up at the council meeting and try to throw out something that we've all been talking about, you know, it's too late. And then he said, you know, work sessions were too late. And it's like, how do I get invited to these tea parties that you guys are having then, when all these things are being discussed? Because when is the appropriate time to discuss it? If it's already, you know, council meeting is too late, work session is too late, it's because everybody's been discussing it behind the scenes. And there's things that as a resident, a member of the public, that I wanted to input into, but they'd already talked it out, they'd already decided it. So I think maybe if we're gonna disagree or agree, that we should just like, do it here. You know, rather, because I honestly, I don't wanna do all these phone calls at work, you know? And, and it maybe they shouldn't be private phone calls. Like, you know, sometimes I, you know, something like about this gym, I'm like, I may have no idea what you're talking about, and I'm gonna look stupid asking questions, because maybe I should know more about it. I can tell you right now, I'm not going to the gym unless every person in that park is trained in CPR, because it will kill me, you know? But we can, you can embarrass yourself, we can have these conversations publicly, that's why we're up on a dais.
Uh, and at first, this, I just wanna say, this does not impact the, the city staff. So the city staff, it's not like they're taking, we're taking away, or we're giving them more power, because.
We're just giving ourselves less.
No, no, this is not about losing power from the council either. This is just, um, so i- in the past, um, uh, we've been having one councilmember initiates, then another councilmember seconds it, and that's sufficient. So all we are saying is, instead of having just one person second it, you would have either the mayor or another councilmember agrees with them.
And that means more phone calls.
Yeah, so that's just one more person to, to get in, on board for that specific idea. So all I, we are adding is that, you know, it's just one more phone call. But I mean, I guess it just comes with the territory, we always talk to each other, and uh, to put on the agenda, we have to talk to each other, so.
Democracy takes work.
Well, yeah, but I mean, the thing is that those discussions that we're having, you know, there's the sunshine law that we can't, like, four or five of us get together and discuss something, but there's no rule that says, I can't get on the phone with you, and then you, and then you, and then you, and have the same conversation five times, except now the public has been completely excluded.
Uh, we don't include the public when we are proposing something. This is just, uh, or I should rephrase it. We normally email, we send an email, somebody initiates something, and we don't call the, the public and tell them, oh, can I put, that's not the way we do it. So we're not changing anything right now, we can still continue talking to, reaching out to our constituencies. We can continue telling them, I'll be working on this, we can continue tell them. But the only difference is, when we put something on the agenda now, we will have to make sure that there is a consensus built within the council, that this is worth it to discuss, because that the council is actually okay to discuss this, it's worth it to use our time. So if not, then you would have too many agenda items. Like, sometimes we used to have twenty agenda items, and all it needed was because you needed is one person and the one person to second you. But if we have had a, a system where you actually need to have another person to agree with you, because, you know, we are seven of us, and out of seven, all you need is three people to support any idea to be placed on the agenda, instead of two right now. So we are making it a little bit uh, uh, a little bit efficient by making us work more harder in terms of reaching out to each other. And uh, and I can assure you, there are so many times when I did second something to be put on the agenda, even though I don't agree with it. So I'm pretty sure we're gonna be in a situation where we might not find even one person to second our idea. So, but if we find three people to agree, great. If we found four people to agree, great. We, this is not voting, by the way, we're not voting at this point. All we're saying is, this is worth it to discuss, and we are actually dis- changing that rule of putting things on the agenda, that's the only thing being changed. And this is pretty much an internal city council procedure, which we can always do. And we're not limiting the public's input, we're not limiting the public's, um, just like it's gonna always be the same process, we're just gonna be brought here in front of the public, nothing is hidden. We're gonna discuss it, just like we're discussing it now. The only thing is, it will be a little bit harder for us, so that we gotta reach out, so one more person and say, Howard, can you second me on this? This is how I'm planning to do this. So if you, and I'll say, okay, I think I like this idea, um, it's worth it to discuss. So that way, it's lesser time being wasted for all of us. So that, and then it will save us time. Go ahead, sir.
I'm glad I'm not gonna be here, but first, would you guys have to prioritize your, I can't. Number two, I mean, this is not only, you know, I remember nights that we've been here for, for one AM.
Yes.
One thirty AM.
Yes.
And the most of it that we were talking was just doesn't even had any benefit. The second thing is, I think when you're saying three, that means uh, ki- it, it's kind of restricting an opinion. So for, you know, for the council, say, okay, but this is my, you know, opinion, what, you know, I just wanna put this on, on, on the agenda. But if you can't get a third person, that means it's just, I mean, you're thinking and just making it short for, 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 for the agenda, not, not putting everything up there, but still, you know, if, you, you know, if I have an opinion and I bring an opinion and I just wanted to get there, and I, I can't get, you, you, you know, two, two people to agree with, what did I feel? I mean, my idea will never add, add to anything, so just think of that too as well. That, that, you, you know, you don't restrict people's, you, you, you know, you know, there, you know, the, the agenda that they have to put it on. But then, when you get like, when you get like thirteen and whatever it is, twenty-something idea with that stuff, you, you know, the staff, they get, they get all this, you know, they added some of them, but they add, get some fro- from us. I think you guys have to prioritize and say, okay, why do we have to spend nine, ten hours for just something? How much we spend here time tonight for, for, for something that, that's, I mean, you, you know, I, I, we haven't even agreed on anything. So, the, number one, but you, you, you know, this, this gives us, you know, this is a lot of work for, for, for the staff. So they have to prioritize. Then we don't have to restrict ourselves to, you know, yourselves, not myself, I'm down with you. So you don't have to restrict yourself or your opinion, or your agenda that you wanna put it in there, okay? What we had, I had no problem, you, you know, you can call somebody and say, hey, this is what I thought, what do you say? Second for me, then we have to discuss. But if we get, you know, keep calling and, you, you know, this and that, yes. Sometimes it's politics, so you have to work behind, behind the scenes, but, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I, I think it's just kind of restrictive.
It's, it's not councilmember Hassan, I, and I do agree with you in terms of prioritizing. And that's where we come when we are seconding on agenda items. We know, I mean, uh, we already, we are always reading how many agenda items have been placed on the agenda. So we have to be considerate of how many agenda items are already placed. And instead of, oh, I just, as long as I got one more councilperson to second me, I can put as many as I want, I can put twenty or thirty of them. Right now, it is like that. So I do agree, but it's not limiting your opinion, I mean, right now.
You have to limit the number of, of, of items in, in each agenda.
We cannot limit it technically, because there might be a time where we need to discuss uh, too many agenda items. But I'm saying, this way actually will help us. So I'll be thinking about behind my head, jeez, there is already twenty agenda items. Before I second it, I'll ask Jamie, oh, Jamie, can we put this next month instead? Let's put this next month. So that way, we can continue having the conversation. So before we put anything on any month's agenda item, this would help us. So if the council fails, that's fine, I mean, uh, but I try, I'm trying to make sure to make it smoother, but, I mean, at the end of the day, we still gonna have agenda items, we have to have agenda items. So uh, we're not gonna say no more agenda items, but um, this is just a way making it, us, the city councilmembers, call one more out of seven, man, one more person out of seven is not very difficult to do. And this is what this, our elected, what, that's why we're elected, is to, to do this work. So it would add us, it would push us to work together in a collaborative fashion. Yes, go ahead.
So I like the idea behind this ordinance. Um, and this is a direction I was heading in early on in my admittedly short term, uh, when I proposed changes to operations that I thought would create greater transparency, create some, you know, some order, and uh, learn there was already at least some discussion, I don't know if it's, if it got very far in terms of doing that. So I appreciate um, the stated intent of this. I think it's a good idea, and I think it creates clarity. Um, I've seen two documents that describe different processes. One was dated, alludes to a resolution back in twenty sixteen, where some of our current public comment policy and other policies that we sometimes follow and sometimes don't were laid out, and a different uh, uh, direction in my uh, orientation when I first was elected. So I think it's good for us to codify this in a way that, that is clear, both for the public and, and for uh, councilmembers current and, and future. Now, I believe transparency and clear guidelines are always good. Um, and I think clarity and transparency are, are critical for uh, the integrity of our governance. My fear, though, is that if we pass this resolution as is, and I don't believe I'm being dramatic here, that we will cease to be the city where possibilities grow, and rather be known as the city where the voice of the minority goes to die. Um, I appreciate you, Councilman Hopkins, for, for rethinking some of this. I believe the arguments that, that each of you who proposed this and seconded this made to dissolve the CDA were, were because it created this exact situation. You could essentially have the consensus of, of almost the majority of council before something ever went to a vote, and then you could have a mayor that could break the tie. In fact, the three of you ran on that platform to break up voting blocks. Which, while I appreciate the gymnastics that you've demonstrated today and trying to frame it in different ways, and I, I do think there are valuable things in this, that one line item creates exactly that. It creates the opportunity for a majority voice to prevent a minority from ever getting something on the agenda. And I think that's problematic. Respect, I'm not finished.
Yeah.
That's what it creates. It means that you might have something that is worth coming before the public, that we do need. And, and my, I might not agree with it, I might not like it, I might vote against it, and the public might not like it. They might not choose to reelect me, you know, if I ever ran again. Um, and that's part of the process. Democracy is work, and protecting it takes work. Uh, as Councilman Carroll said, there are other ways that we can, you know, control the time. Uh, whether it's, I think in the past, we've done special call meetings if a work session went over. Uh, I agree with the importance of, of respecting our staff, um, and, and the fact that at some point, believe it or not, I, I think you got, you do sleep, right, or is, is that a, more of a, an idea, kind of? So I, I think that, that we need to keep things as is, in terms of the councilmember. Uh, I, I think it, it, it's um, a little bit shameful of us to, to propose something like this, when not last week, we uh, criticized the gerrymandering that's silencing the voice of minority in our state. And this essentially, functionally, that line item does just that. I think the rest of the ordinance is great. I would suggest we change sex and the, you know, the, the proposed change to twenty-six to A, uh, to, to be as it is current. I think it would be fine, I'm like, this might be something that the Charter Review Committee would, would uh, want to weigh in on. Um, uh, that we allow the mayor to get stuff on the agenda with just a second, instead of needing two councilmembers to second. Um, and uh, I think that uh, one thing I would uh, like for us to uh, consider adding as well as an amendment, uh, or, or just amending the, the proposed piece of legislation, uh, is to also make sure that we do include uh, the uh, names of the councilmembers who have co-sponsored a piece of legislation or an agenda item uh, in the actual agenda packet, so the public knows who's proposing it, who to ask questions of. Um, and, and then, um, so I'm just codifying it. Um, and uh, and then the second thing, I think we should add an, an item F, uh, that requires us within two business days to post a summary of the subjects acted on, especially if you have an amendment to the agenda, you know, who was in attendance, that is, is part of sunshine law. Um, and, and also, uh, we don't have to post the meeting minutes, you know, those are voted on and, and uh, approved at the following meeting, but also post any video or audio recording. Uh, just so that, again, the public can, can hear us debate, can hear our opinions on things. And if they disagree with us, they can let us know, hopefully not during work hours. Uh, but I, I do think that this is uh, very problematic to uh, to have something that essentially encourages backdoor dealing, not discussing something, not getting an idea formulated enough so that it's concrete and can actually have a, we can have a discussion on it that's different. But something that uh, you, you know, encourages more government in the shadows, rather than allowing issues to come forward.
I think you just used very loaded terms. I mean, I don't know, what do you mean government shadows? All I'm saying is, talk to one more person. And right now, having two councilmembers could be considered government in shadow, I guess, according to your terminology. I don't under, I don't really, anyway. The point is, um, right now, we have a, a process that requires two councilmembers.
As do most municipalities.
To put anything on the agenda. And this is primarily the city council's uh, rule, so we can always change it, and the future council can always change it. It, we didn't, it was never like, always like that. In the past, um, uh, I think we changed this in twenty sixteen, I believe. We qualified it to require two councilmembers. And at that time, I actually wanted the mayor to also be part of this. And right now, all we're doing is we adding the mayor to be part of it as well, so he could be the third person. The mayor could be the third person or any other councilmember. So the idea is not to talk behind other people. I mean, that makes it even more harder when you have less councilmembers, less elected people talking behind is more difficult for what you exactly said, instead of having three people. That's actually a good governance when you have three councilmembers elected, represent our community to talk to each other. So I don't understand how that could be considered as a bad thing, having a good working city council, not just uh, whatever block you said. It's a lot easier to have two people to be a block than having three people or four people to be a block. So I, I'm really confused on what you were saying earlier, so, anyway, go ahead, man.
I, I was just saying, I mean, I think you're actually maybe losing more ground than you're gaining, if we could move on, because we still have five items on the agenda and it's.
Thank you. Yes, all right. If there is no other comments uh, from the council, anybody registered to speak on this?
Did, um, I think Councilwoman Johnson is on the phone, wanted to say something as well.
Oh, please, yeah.
Okay. Hi, guys. Um, excuse me for my exit, but I had a coffee frenzy. Um, I just wanted to add to um, the conversation. Um, and we did get some questions from the community as to why we're actually including the mayor. Um, this is an initiative, basically, to incorporate teamwork. Um, that's something we haven't had, and as you saw tonight, there are agenda items that one or two people, maybe four, that we knew nothing about, and if the conversation was had prior to putting it on the agenda, it would have made the transition a lot smoother. It would have made the transition a lot smoother. So all we were trying to do when I spoke to Vice Mayor. Yasu was to incorporate more of a team building effort from council. Before we, like now, it's ten o'clock and we still have five more items. And the community, we've lost half of them. So that's the only thing I, that's what, that was my takeaway from it. Was to basically talk amongst each other more than one or two. And let us know what's going on. It makes the whole thing smoother. But when we have to sit here and go back and forth. Just trying to get familiar with the item because we know nothing, um, it makes it a little more time consuming. And as far as the mayor is concerned, the mayor already has the right to put items on the agenda. She just need us to second them. Now, um, I did run this by Stephen, so if you guys don't mind, I'll let for Steve, Stephen to actually. Let us know what this looks like with the mayor being a part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Steve, Mr. Quinn, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so effectively, the current, you know, put putting aside items that are added by the staff. Uh, the current rule is that two council members. You know, it's basically two council members or the mayor and two council members. Um, and then, so when the mayor is in favor of adding an item, the rule would actually be exactly the same. Uh, because it would be three members of the council and for purposes of this, we would be including the mayor in that. So it would be the same, you know, the mayor plus two council members is the same as three, including the mayor. So there wouldn't be any change there. Um, and then I just wanted to mention quickly, eh, um, that there are some, you know. We've really focused on that one element of the ordinance, which obviously is important. Um, but, you know, just to quickly draw attention to some of the other things that. Miss Cowie and I talked about and recommended that are included in there, you know, just to kind of give structure to the whole process. Like the city manager will send out the drafted agenda to the council at least a week in advance. And the city clerk will publish it to the public at least forty eight hours in advance, but as soon as possible. And then there was a um, a provision that basically freezes the agenda for that last forty eight hour period. Until the meeting starts. And another thing I think is important uh, that we did today. That is included in the draft ordinance and that I would recommend doing at every meeting. Is to adopt the agenda before we get to doing business. Uh, because that gives a chance, you know, for example, some of the hypotheticals we heard about tonight are that. Let's just say that this ordinance was adopted and so three are required. Uh, three council members are required to put an item on the agenda. If there's a minority of the council that doesn't reach that threshold, they would have the opportunity to make a motion. And at least be heard as to what they want on there. And if it doesn't pass, then it doesn't get on. And another thing is, let's say we get to the council meeting and and there's a agreement amongst the council that there's just too many items on. So that um, the point in the meeting at the beginning where you adopt the agenda. Is an opportunity to say, okay, items six and ten, uh, we can save till next month. You know, so let's trim this agenda down and adopt it with six and ten deleted. Uh, so just just wanted to mention this.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Alright. Anybody registered to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, um, the Med first.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'll start first. I admit with this agenda item, I'm truly disappointed. Our city agenda creation system has worked fine for years under various different councils and mayors. But sneaky, sneaking this change into the middle of a jam packed agenda at the end of the year is shady. The agenda item is extremely light on details, but has tremendous impact going forward. I'm not gonna beat around the bush. This agenda item seems targeted at silencing the agenda nomination ability of Jamie Carroll and YT Bell. What are you so afraid of? What could be so terrible if this council has to silence minority members? In the past, I've seen good things come out of what some people thought were initially bad agenda items. Why? Because at least they were discussed in public. This agenda seems to be targeted at killing off agenda items before the public can ever hear them. This will only encourage backroom horse trading like we had years ago instead of robust public discussion. Also, the three person threshold, it creates a built in voting block. Remember when voting block was a bad word? I do. Heck, some of you sitting up there rain on the promise of being against voting blocks. What happened to that? This doesn't simplify the process, it squashes it. It does the same thing that the Republicans did in the Cobb County school system. To silence Democrat board members. It's an underhanded power grab and frankly, those who proposed it should be ashamed. If you want to salvage this agenda item, use it to codify the existing two person council process. Thank you.
Um, I am also really concerned based on the verbiage written in the packet. It is nothing at all, but you have stated up on the dais. That's very worrisome. If you're gonna publish it into the public document one way and talk about it another, you already have lost my trust and confidence. And you're discussing anything outside in the open. Laura's right, this will cause more backroom trading. Mark is right, it squashes minority opinions. You have danced around not so delicately, the fact that you don't like the fact that fresh harvest was brought back up to the agenda. In fact, if you'd had your way, it never would have made it on the agenda. Your proposal ensures it would have never made it on the agenda and you haven't exactly been subtle about that tonight. That is a huge point to talk about for the population, for the community. Squashing brilliant innovative ideas. Is a horrible thing and that's exactly what this gives the council the the power to do. In fact, I had several discussions with you about the DDA. In which you expressly stated your objection to it was that there were three council members on the DDA. It made, and I quote, a voting block. They can get anything they want done. They only need one other person's approval. And that was your basis for getting rid of the DDA. How can you now flip that around and say, oh no, it makes more efficient government if all three people agree? That is hypocrisy. That is exactly what that is. And to try and justify it and streamlining is ridiculous. This huge agenda, any one of you could have said, you know what? This agenda is too big with city staff additions. We should hold this and talk about it another time. But you didn't. Don't sit here and say, oh, we'll think about and prioritize agenda items. You don't do it now. What makes anybody think you're gonna magically do that ahead if you have three people that have to agree to something? This is terrible idea that is only going to squash those smaller minority visions and have people. Trading and talking in the background. It'll never get out to the public. This is terrible.
Anybody else signed up?
Miss Bill.
Go ahead, Mr. Bill.
Miss.
It's YT Dell. Hi, everyone.
Oh.
Um, so I'm here tonight to uh, give my advice on the agenda item G eight. As a previous council member and a returning council member in January, understanding nature and the function of the role of an elected official. And I do not think that this measure should be moved on, as it's not creating an efficient process. And it's a direct effect on voters that elected you and reelected me to serve based on their needs and desires. So we shouldn't delay discussions and movement on measures due to the need of vetting and research, which you should do as a part of being an elected official. This process reduces transparency, open dialogue and increase as you're asked to research and vet without the voter's input. This is your job to conduct research and review supplemental materials and consult with your colleagues before the meeting. To have a clear understanding on the proposed ordinances as well as to provide your perspective while making inquiries during the meetings and listening to residents. Moving forward with this will dilute the perspective and the desire of the resident that we serve by delaying action. That could have a detrimental impact on their quality of life. Furthermore, this idea could have gone before committee. And receive public input before bringing it to a work session. And I would like to remind you that a work session is just that. Assessing what you work through ideas, discuss those and get input in order to move forward and see if we, as a collective. Are going to move forward with a vote, if you want to be efficient. My recommendation is that you table and further discuss and research and vet as a part of a committee after swearing in the new council member. In which they will have to govern under this new process. And you care about good government, you wouldn't sign voters. To have advised what they want to see in the community and that are relying on all of y'all to do the work. This is a political place. It has nothing to do with y'all working together. We should do that anyway. Also, I would like to say that this is a direct contradiction in what you just indicated, Councilmember Iwet. You indicated that sometimes you second items and have no plans on voting on them. So you having three people to second them will not move forward with a consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, sir.
Alright, anybody else who wants to speak on this from the City Hall? Go ahead, sir.
I just got a few suggestions and it might be already implemented with with within you guys' system and with the way you do things. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson says something very important. She says she got questions from the community. Uh, what I'm hearing is, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong. Uh, the council members, uh, they suggest the agendas and you guys vote on them. But do you first get the, what the community concern is about that before you even think about it? Call we, because you do work for the community, correct? Playing some answer. Yes, you do.
Absolutely.
You work for the community. So we, you, council members. You have your own personal agendas. Let's make sure that not your personal agenda doesn't like you see change, but let it reflect on the community's agenda, what they would like to see. Okay, I did not know this, but I'm glad I heard it, is that the city manager makes sure that all the meetings, uh, all the means, agendas. And and what you talked about goes to the public. That I didn't know. Thank you so much. I love to hear that. Also, to the second point, uh, like posting a summary of the meetings, that's what I'm talking about with the city manager. Uh, the next thing is helping the community. I think, I I think Laura brought that up. Uh, selling the idea to the public, that's where it need to be sold first. Before it even comes here. Okay, a lot of these things, I come to meetings kind of frequently. A lot of these things here, your average resident. Have no idea what you're talking about. And how it affects them. I do propose, I don't know how Ms. Cowie does it, where she sends it in different languages, what if you do, like, like kudos to you. If not, I would suggest to send it in different languages where it could be understood by the public. Uh, also, it need to be explained what impact it would be for them. You know, what impact it would be. And quite naturally, you guys are always thinking about this, the residents, it would be a positive impact, but let them know that it's a positive impact. Always keep the public aware, because that's who we work for. I keep saying, we cause, I expect, you know, you know, because I serve the community too. Uh, but we always want to make them aware that we care about what they care about. Okay, not our own personal agenda.
Mark. Thanks, sir. Alright, since there is no more, uh, nobody else is speaking on this, um, closing the public area on this and moving to next. Um, I, I think, um, we're gonna have to talk with uh, Councilmember Johnson. Are you still on the line?
I am.
Alright, so my, my feeling is, I think, um, it still can go to the council next week and for a vote. Um, we're gonna use the same um, language that uh, we already have. Uh, in the last, in twenty sixteen, when we adapted the the procedure. And um, uh, especially when the mayor being included, that does not really add anything. So we certainly could uh, include the mayor in there and that's one option. The other option is have it the same language in there, having three council members or the mayor or just. Standardize it, make it, or, I mean, just leave it to council members plus the mayor. Or, I mean, which is like that right now. Um, but that's not when the mayor is. The deciding factor. So usually, it will be, um, if the mayor wants to propose something. He gonna have to be seconded or she gonna have to be seconded by two council members. But now, what we're doing is, we're gonna make it a way where. Um, it would be, if one council member initiates something, he could be seconded by one council member and the mayor. So that way, we still can include the mayor in the process. So that way, we, that will be another alternative. So, um, I I I feel like it's still ready to go to, to for a vote next week.
So I just realized, um, would you consider uh, changing the language to to include the mayor? Uh, where, you know, he or she only has to get a second, um, but leaving the council members the same. Cause the the difference between the two is, you know, in our current system, you have two voting members. Um, who are, you know, proposing and then seconding. And then with the mayor, you know, the mayor obviously only votes in a tie. Um, and so the mayor is is having to get the buy in of two voting members. I think it would make sense to change it to where the mayor could get, you know, the buy in of one voting member. If if they, you know, believe they had something valuable that they wanted to bring to the public. Uh, however, again, this doesn't change the the concerns that that I brought up, that others have brought up, you know, of of creating a system where. Where something wouldn't even make it, you know, to a debate, even if it's valuable. Um, and and so would you consider changing that, you know, maybe adding it again, some of the language that would, that would add. Uh, just codify when when minutes are published, when, you know, when some of the audio and visuals up. We do have gaps in some of our records, you know. And and that you guys are concerned about transparency as much as I am. Uh, making sure that that people are able to access and accessibility is is something that that we've talked about a lot. Um, especially the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee as well, uh, was formed, you know, I think, and that's a part of of the charter of the committee. Um, and so I think, you know, I would encourage us to keep, keep the language as is. I'm I'm more than happy to bring the mayor into that. You know, where she only has to get a second, um, in order to get something on the agenda. Um, and uh, and and then to codify the, you know, the 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 timing of when audio and video and and summaries are released to the public.
So I mean, uh.
I can include that in writing to, if it'd be helpful.
I I think, um, I certainly will, will consider, like I said. It's just, um, I would like to us work as a team.
This doesn't prevent us. We're not prevented from working as a team.
Yes, it actually makes us, it strengthens the teamwork.
You know, what it does is it creates, it creates the ability for for three members of council to control the agenda. There are, there are other parameters we could put in place to win the time. Uh, you know, I've had conversations, we have conversations with other members of council. We're not following the the procedures that we already have in place.
Sir, three council members, you say, right? Three council members still can dominate. I mean, this is not about trying to dominate. This is trying to make the council work with the mayor, for example. So right now, the mayor would be part of the, this natural change, it would be the same, still you, I mean, uh, that's uh, another alternative. We could ha- keep the same uh, process. But we would include also the mayor in the decision making. So instead of having two council member, hold on, put something on the agenda. We could have one council member initiates, a second council member seconds, then the mayor also could be part of the process. She could also second something and that would be, that would be one way of putting things on the agenda.
I I would be okay with that if it could be one council member and the mayor or two council members.
Well, if that, if we do that, that's the reverse. So that would make it easy to work with one person instead of no. So that's where I don't understand where people are saying this is gonna be.
Don't think you're gonna understand tonight. I mean, can, we could adjourn the meeting and do a special call meeting later in.
Okay, alright, never mind, alright. We're not gonna do special call meeting. Uh, alright, but I I do. I do see where you're coming from, but I think it's, we're gonna talk more with uh, Councilmember Johnson. And um, this is very likely that it will be for a vote on next week.
Okay.
Uh, and then we're gonna move to the next agenda item, which is uh. Uh, and then we're gonna move to the next agenda item, which is, uh, G nine, which is review, discuss a resolution to present to the housing standing advisory committee to draft policies, procedures, and or ordinances related to apartment inspections, tenant landlord relations and other recommendations. And this was introduced by the mayor. Uh, I think it was seconded by you as well, Councilmember Carol. So if you could present it, that would be nice.
Sure. So definitely when I was campaigning and going to the apartments, I would say I heard two issues. The rent was too high and the apartment conditions were bad. And I know right now we inspect 20% of the apartments every year. I think we need to think about if there's a better way to do the inspections, if we need to inspect a higher percentage, if there need to be more fines for, you know, bad apartment conditions, if there are other ways that we can encourage, you know, better conditions in Clarkston apartments. And so I think that this is, um, a good first step to studying this issue and seeing what we can do to hopefully improve that.
Any questions or comments from the council?
If I may.
Yes.
In the absence of the mayor and having spoken with her in reference to this issue, it has been advised that we, um, send this to the SAC committee. Um, that way the SAC committee would review and hold a commu- a committee meeting and include the subject matter experts needed in the following areas, which is review multifamily interior inspection ordinance and code enforcement process related to the apartment complexes and the multifamily dwelling. They would also identify policies, practices and programs to address the local municipalities, the tenants landlord relationship. And resume our zoning and, uh, review our zoning and planning issues related to future apartment con- complexes and multifamily dwelling developments and the comprehensive plan. So at this time, the mayor would like this item, um, sent over to the SAC committee for review.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I just wanna clarify for those who are listening, if they don't know what SAC means, it's just a acronym for Standing Advisory Committees.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, just the housing, housing committee is what she's referring to.
Yeah, to the housing committee.
The housing committee.
Any other comments? All right. If anybody registered to speak on this?
Ms. Metford?
Um, I just wanted to say, I think this is a great idea. We definitely need to, to do something along this line. I'm worried about how much city can do with its limited powers and availability. So what kind of plan or process is there for this to come up with some sort of actual actionable item? Something that we can do. I don't want to just sit and have discussions and discussions and discussions. This is a real problem that needs a real solution. Is there some kind of parameter we can set that gives the, um, housing SAC the ability to make a decision or make a strong recommendation that the council will vote on so that we can have an actionable item at the end of this?
Thank you. Anybody else registered?
Ms. Roberta Malavinda.
Go ahead, Roberta.
Yes, um, thank you. Yeah, I think I'm, I just unmuted. Um, I just want to speak in favor of this and I just really like the idea of bringing it to the housing standing committee so that regi- uh, residents can speak and we can actually come up with actionable policies, programs, um, and policies. And, um, to the point of action, I think that is one of the, uh, ideas that need to be brought to the committee, that their role is to do research, to bring in experts, to hear from residents and to come up with specific recommendations that are doable, um, within the city's parameters. So I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. And, and to know that we have heard, um, you know, a lot of issues from, um, from residents and a lot of the things, um, may be easily resolved around, uh, communications, um, between landlords and residents. And there's some other issues around language barriers. And those are all kinds of issues that are actually, uh, you can actually do something about. So I'm very excited about this.
Thanks again. Anybody else?
I had a Mr. Kelly James, but I don't see him online.
All right, uh, let's give him one more chance. Mr. Kelly?
James.
Kelly James. All right. Well, let's go ahead. And anybody else from the City Hall would like to speak on this? Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to piggyback on, it's Herbert again, Herbert Clark. I'd like to piggyback on some things that were said. Uh, the apartment inspections, uh, piggyback on that. I would love to see, because I live in an apartment myself, so I've been here for, I've, I've been in the same apartment for 18 years. So you can imagine I've seen it from, uh, uh, go from better to worse. Okay? Uh, the apartment inspections, I could, I would like to see that in action. I'd like to see it more. I don't know who comes now, but they, when, when they come to inspect, they, they more like fire inspectors. They come to check the, uh, fire extinguishers and the, and the, uh, and the smoke alarms. To me, that's not an apartment inspection. Apartment inspection is you looking at the foundation. To Christ, how strong the foundation is. You know, the living conditions, uh, you know, the livable condition like we do in real estate. We can't sell a house to, uh, we, we can't give a convention a loan. Uh, we can't ask for a convention loan unless the house is fully livable. No repairing, no nothing. These apartments, uh, so, so, and, 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 uh, tenant landlord relations, that we can't control. That need to be distilled in the landlord. Because what happens is, is that we can't put in demands on the landlords to, 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 uh, to have relations with us. Because I remember a time, uh, years ago, I actually told a landlord, I said, this rent that you're charging me is not adding up to the accommodations. Do you know they tried to legally throw me out? For forcing my opinion? And they'll do it if you let them get away with it. If you force your opinion, say, this is not worth the rent you're charging me, they want to try to start evicting you or putting you out. So that's, that, that should be something legal about that. So the relationships and the, and the tenant landlord, I go to my landlord, I want to ask him a simple question. They come to the door and they take much longer time to accept my rent. Then to have a conversation to ask them something about my apartment. That's not, that, that's not having the conversation. But rent, they'll take the time to talk with you. So that's gonna have to be on the landlord and, uh, and, and the tenant. I believe there's some, there should be some kind of conversation with the tenant, I, I mean, with the landlord, because they are one of our biggest revenue streams. But we need to have a conversation. We can't put restrictions on them like that for communicating, but we think we need to form some sort of thing, something with inside the city council or get the public involved to form some sort of, uh, uh, I'd say community effort, so we can have a conversation with the landlord to try to improve the, 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 uh, communication. Okay? And the last thing at all, and I like to see, instead of calling it affordable housing, when we do these things that's listed, then it becomes attractable housing. Because when it's attractable housing, it won't matter if the rent goes up a hundred dollars, because it's, because it's attractable. You know, it's a tri- but when you got to pay a hundred dollars more at the end of your term, then you're living in the same conditions. That's, it's not affordable, it's not livable. So we got a problem.
Thank you, sir. All right. I think that was it for this agenda item. We're gonna move to G 10. Review slash discuss a resolution to present to the community development and economic development standing advisory committees uh, to create a comprehensive workforce development plan for the city of Clarkston. And this was also introduced by the mayor and, um, uh, also, uh, as the council members. I'm not exactly sure, uh, but I also was part of the, um, the initial, uh, recommendation to, to have a workforce development. So I'm really glad we move forward and further discuss this and hopefully come up with a, a workable, uh, solution and have our, uh, workforce dep- development program up and running. Uh, any comments, Councilmember Johnson and Carol, maybe?
I mean, I think this is a good idea, just because I feel like last time we discussed a workforce development program, but we didn't really have a plan. We didn't really get anything off the ground. So hopefully this time we can develop a plan rather than just saying workforce development program.
Right. Any other comments?
We still don't have a plan.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, uh, that's the idea of getting, uh, Councilmember Johnson, go ahead.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Yes, um, I'm gonna piggyback off of what Jamie said. Yes, and the reason, um, this is going to committee is because we wanted to get more community involvement. And personally, um, we're looking for expertise. I'm using organizations, um, not, or in a professional services this time and making sure that we are, um, taking the right approach. So we, we were kind of up against the wire the first time when we came up with the, um, workforce development plan. We kind of ran out of time, so we're giving it a little more effort this time to make sure that anyone that need these skills will be able to get some viable information and not just a rush job this time. So that's why it's being referred over to the committee. So we can, um, dialogue with the community and other organizations to make this successful.
Thank, thank you. And just to put a little background on this, um, when I initially, uh, proposed the idea, we were in a crunch time because the money had to be spent by the end of the year. And, um, so we tried. I mean, we, I tried to work with the, uh, with friendship, uh, I mean, friends of refuge. Uh, they tried as well, but they were not successful in coming up with a concrete plan. They tried, I mean, they tried to help a few people, uh, get jobs, put resumes and all that, but it wasn't robust enough. But we did put in, the money was there. We fu- we funded a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, workforce development. And we were under a time crunch, so, but we did not have any partners, uh, especially, uh, from those organizations that deal with it. So hopefully, uh, now with the committees can actually find a partner. Uh, I really hope we can find a college or, uh, a partner in terms of, um, uh, real, uh, organization that are creating real jobs or train people for certain, uh, jobs that are actually jobs of the future. So a lot of jobs are being either shipped away from, uh, uh, from the country or they're being taken over by machines. So we definitely need to ke- think ahead and, uh, come up with a concrete plan. So I, I'm looking forward to be part of the discussion as well. Any other comments? All right, anybody signing?
Mr. Metford?
Uh, Mr. Metford.
Yes, uh, this is an excellent idea. Uh, I wanted to mention that Atlanta Technical College offers free Hope Career Grants. That can be used to learn many different marketable skills, uh, something I learned about, uh, a couple of years ago. It's a very awesome program and it's great because they're very accessible. Uh, Atlanta Technical College is on the MARTA line, so you can get there from here. Uh, so it may be good to reach out to them as a partner program. So, uh, but I think this is an outstanding idea. I'd hope that you also have reached out to maybe Luke at Amplio. Because I think they're one of the largest, um, employers in the entire city. So, and I'm pretty sure they do some sort of jobs training program. So anything that we can do with our own local businesses would be fantastic. But, um, I grew up in the trades. I was in vocational school. And so, but there are so many jobs out there that are well-paying and they are high demand for now and the future that I think our citizens can really capitalize on. So this is excellent. I can't wait to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else signed? Okay, anybody else? The City Hall? All right, we're gonna move to G 11, which is review slash discuss resolution for creation of a downtown development authority, DDA, with input, the community, um, development and economic development standing advisory committees and to coordinate with staff on a business and economic development strategy program. And this was, uh, introduced by the mayor as well, but it's pretty straightforward. It just is to send it to the environment, I mean, to the community development and economic development, uh, advisory committees. And, um, uh, thus also, uh, will be to discuss and come up with the, with the solution for, for this, uh, specific agenda. Anybody else want to comment on this?
I just have two questions. The first is that I don't know if we normally have our work session in January. It's been a while, so I don't, I forgot. But is the swearing in the new members gonna happen on the fourth or the 11th? Because I think sometimes we just have real brief meetings combined it.
We're on G 11.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the other one.
All right. Anybody else signed in to speak on this? On G 10, uh, G 11 I'm talking about.
The Metfords.
All right, go ahead, sir. Oh, ma'am?
Yeah, um, I find it interesting that you're bringing up the DDA. And the problem is that, again, like with the previous agenda item on changing the process for adding items to the agenda, the entire resolution is left off in the packet. So as a member of the public, we really have no idea what you're discussing or what to be discussing about, which does nothing to help gender trust in our elected officials if all the conversations are going to be had behind doors so that you can get a consensus or talk about it. These things should be included in the packet so that it can be open for discussion and open for research by everybody. Um, I'm concerned about what this entails because based on what your previous discussion was, the item posted in the agenda was nothing like what language you were discussing and what apparently the city attorney and the city manager had discussed an entire resolution that isn't at all in the public agenda packet, that is nothing like what was posted. So it's very concerning that meetings like this that affect the entire city and entire community are being discussed without any public knowledge whatsoever, just a token comment that, yes, we discussed it. So I hope that this comes out in another committee with more robust discussion and an opportunity for a lot more public input.
Thank you.
Mr. Metford.
Thank you. So I really hope this works. Um, while I don't want to be Tucker or Avondale, I want to revitalize our downtown district. We need to respect our current business owners while also getting creative on attracting new businesses. We need to focus on assisting businesses to thrive and not making them jump through confusing hoops. I've spoken to too many business owners who have fled Clarkston or have given up even trying to start here. I even spoke to one business and said they're gonna start their business just outside our city limits because they want to serve our people but don't want to deal with our city. That hurt. Um, I know our old CDA is dead, so let's get moving with this new one, get the DDA going, but we need to do it right. But it needs to be something that functions. Um, like I said, I don't want to be Tucker. I don't want to be Avondale. But I did speak to somebody the other day and I thought I was gonna get them to start a business here in Clarkston. They're like, no, we went ahead and went to Tucker. And I just, I, I had no answer for that. So we gotta do something, folks. So let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anybody else signed in? Okay. Anybody want to speak from the City Hall? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move to the next agenda item, which is G 12. To review and discuss the 2022 city council work session and regular meeting and city holiday calendar. Uh, this was introduced by the mayor as well, but if Ms. Cowie could cover this.
This, um, attached is the 2022 city council meeting schedules. Unless otherwise noted, all meetings are held on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM. That will include the work sessions and regular city council meetings. The calendar as listed, um, from January 4th to the December 6th meeting. And that also includes the 2022 city holidays. Again, unless otherwise noted, city offices are closed on the following or the attached 13 days.
Vice Mayor?
All right. Thank you so much. Anybody, any count, questions from the council?
The same question I asked you early. Uh, so I think. The same question I asked too early. Uh so I think normally sometimes we combine January into one meeting. I'm okay with doing it too. I just want to know when they're gonna do swearing in. And just I think Councilmember Bell, future Councilman Bell is online and future Councilman Michigan Hood making lines, they may want to know in order to coordinate.
Okay. And and I honestly do not wish that we have a like a the way we were sworn in, that was really horrible because it was, I mean, they put in too many, it was too many agenda items before we even start the swearing ceremony until ten ten P M. So I don't want to see us like that and um uh I think we just should do just sworn swearing ceremony one day, which is the work session, I guess. And then we could go to the council meeting next day, or I don't have a problem at least even combining them. But we should not have, unless an agenda item is imminent and we need it to this to decide on it, we should not be putting anything on on the January besides the swearing in. Unless it's eminent, like I said, but if something is very important that it has to be there, I think it we're gonna have to uh be flexible or call a special call meeting, whatever, but not have a work session, have twenty agenda items, and then have the swearing at the end. That's not a good idea, so yeah.
We had discussed preview, having an uh swearing in event on Monday and then the work session on Tuesday and City Council meeting the following week. So it would be completely separate and do it as an event like we had been, get the Burundi drummers and speakers and those who are being uh sworn in can choose what kind of entertainment they like. But I think we just need to completely break them out.
Break it up? I'm not sure. Either way, uh I mean, I have no problem. But I I'd like to hear from if not, there's nothing from the council. Councilmember Johnson first, and then we're gonna go to Councilmember Elects.
Okay, yes, um I did um have a a conversation with um Laura and Miss Calwe. Um I did, I I totally support the swearing in being separate. Um I think that's very important, and we can double up on the work session and the meeting um going forward. But I think they deserve to have that day without a meeting.
Thank you. Um if the council elects are on the line, they definitely are welcome to speak right now.
Nope, see, Miss Bell is not online.
How about Miss Hood?
And either works for me. Um I appreciate uh the consideration that uh that Vice Mayor said about not having a repeat of the last uh time when the meeting went so long and the inauguration was so late. So yes, a separate day or if uh there's some possibility of limiting the agenda for the work session, either one is fine with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hood. Anybody else signing to speak on this?
No, sir.
All right.
And one other question for Stephen is, he's online. Would they have to be sworn in before the work session or participate in the work session, I'm guessing?
I don't think there's any rule. I don't.
I don't know.
How about we do the swearing in on a a Sunday night? Can we do that?
Mr. Quinn?
And Tuesday have the work session and then.
Is there any uh rule when the ceremony has to be held?
Uh no, I mean, in fact, there's no rule requiring a ceremony. It could be done just by signing the the important, legally speaking, I'm not in any way against the ceremony. But legally speaking, the important thing is just signing the oath of office. And the time that that would need to happen before is prior to any vote. So just by the consent of the council, the newly elected members could participate in the work session. And they would just need to to do the swearing in and sign their oaths uh before they vote on anything. So it could be at at any, all the options you've talked about would all be legal.
And with all due respect, we do want to have them a ceremony.
Friday night, then, January seventh, right between the two.
Either way.
We can, we can email them and see what works for. And I've already done this, it's all tab for me, but maybe Y T and Susan would want a different night, or we can email them, figure it out later.
So we can figure this out, and if it's gonna be on the work session, let's uh anticipate uh make sure that, you know, this is not gonna take longer than let's say, half an hour, discuss something that's very urgent, and then just move on to the swearing in on that day.
My argument with that is I don't want to cut the city short as well, because, you know, we are paid to do a job. And there was actually a lot of important stuff on that agenda. We were sworn in on on January seventh. I mean, I hated that it ran as late as it did, but
It was important, right?
They were trying to annex like
Well.
half of Georgia.
All right, um if there is nobody else speaking on this.
The one thing I was gonna say is November first, the meeting is set for an election day. I know it's not a council election. I don't know if anybody, if if they still want to have it, even though it's just a Georgia state and federal election, if you if you want to move it to that Thursday.
Say it again.
There's a meeting on November first. I know it's not a city election, but there is state and federal elections that there will be state and federal elections that day. And I think that the city employees still get it off, election day off, if I understand. So I didn't know if you want to still have that on the first, you wanted to move that to the third as well.
November first?
Yeah, that if that's the first Tuesday in November, that that's when the election will be for state and federal office.
Oh, we always change our meetings on election days.
Right, right. Yeah, I was just thinking we could approve it, just make it.
Yeah, that needs to be moved, I think.
Uh of course, okay.
That's all I had.
So here we have November eleventh for Friday, probably exactly why for that, that's for that reason maybe.
No, that's the holiday.
Oh, Veterans Day, my bad, okay.
Meeting is November first, which is the first Tuesday in November.
Maybe we 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 can always change it anyway.
Yeah.
Uh I think you we have a speaker who want to say something.
On what date is the uh, excuse me again, my name is Herbert. Uh what date is the ceremony? Right now, have you made a decision? It's gonna be sep- it's gonna be separate, right?
We 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 need to talk to the two Councilmembers select before we decide that.
Okay, okay. But do you know what actual date it's gonna be, regardless of? Okay, now, where is the legal time for, primarily for the legal time for them to be uh sworn in, is in January?
They just have to sign paperwork before they vote. They just have to sign the paperwork before they vote is what the legal requirement is.
Yes, January.
It's gonna clarify that for you.
Well, the Charter actually says that the uh the new members will take office at the first regular meeting of January. And then, so if there's gonna be a work session before then, then they can participate by consent of the current council. Um you know, there's no votes taken in the work session anyway.
Thank you, sir.
So other word, the public, right now, you don't have anything for the public at in 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 no uh definitive when when it's gonna happen.
We need to talk to Y T and Susan.
Not right now. That's all I'm saying.
So normally, it would have been the work session day, sir. That would have been the swearing in day, but right now, we will talk with those elected and we'll see what they would like to see us to do, because that's really their day, so.
Yeah, it will be public.
Yeah, it will be public, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
I'm asking all this, because I don't want to miss this.
It's a party.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we're gonna move to.
So for classification.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, the only change currently we're looking at is um November first, the regular City Council meeting is moved to November third, Councilcare.
Yes.
I think that's right. Unless there's any dispute for that.
That's fine. It could be the Thursday instead of Tuesday. That's what we normally do. All right, then the next agenda item is G thirteen to review and discuss the allocation of ARPA funds for twenty twenty-two programs and services in the city of Clarkston.
This was um Mayor.
This is.
Vice Mayor Yasu, this was just for transparency and discussion purposes.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
We do have our ARPA funds, and we were also discussing budget. Okay, we just wanted to make sure amongst yourselves um that you discuss any additional allocations or any additional um items that you wanted to add to ARPA funds.
But there's nothing to vote or anything on this. Okay, okay, perfect. All right, uh any questions from the council on this?
I've got a great idea. Why don't why don't we add a park upgrade to the ARPA fund? The park upgrade.
Now, we need to discuss.
All right, um do we have anybody else?
Councilwoman Johnson.
Councilmember Johnson, go ahead.
So uh my question is for Miss Calwe. Miss Calwe, if we wanted to see something allocated um from ARPA for twenty twenty-two, would we do that tonight? We would discuss it now?
You could you could discuss it now. And you could buy it at December seventh, or you can as you can let it stay as is, and we can discuss it again in January.
Well, I would like to.
That we currently have and and continue with the projects that we have right now um as listed.
Okay, well, at this time, council members, I have no money for food distribution. So if we can come up with a number for food distribution for twenty twenty-two, that would be great.
Thank you. And we certainly could uh roll uh the similar allocation for next year as well. Um. All right, any other comments?
What was our allocation for this year for total food?
I think I remember it was fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was fifty thousand for food distribution. And currently, as of November the thirtieth, we have four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Left on that, okay. And uh we certainly can roll it, I mean.
Can we just say a hundred thousand?
Thank you.
Because it's only a part of the year um for that fifty thousand.
That's correct. Thank you.
I mean, if there's a consensus with the council, yeah, why not? I mean, I'm not sure. But I think, is this the right time to to discuss this, or we should?
May I think it's up to you?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think we'd want to probably do it for all of it, right? Not just food. We'd want to do it all at once. Do we want to do more assistance? Do we want to do more business? And I'm I'm happy to discuss it. I mean, I don't know if we want to discuss right now, because it's eleven o'clock, but.
Were you planning um on doing another food distribution in the next two weeks? Well, not definitely not in the next week, right?
I I was, but unfortunately, December has been halted based on funds.
That's why we need to talk about that part now. This is food, and it's Christmas.
And right now, for the month of December, it only takes about ten thousand dollars to um to do a food distribution in the month of December. So I'm not asking for fifty thousand. Just ten.
I think we could engage the mayor and we could see uh what the consensus is on this. I think there's no reason why not why not to um add uh the ten thousand dollars and uh I mean, yeah, just for the food drive uh for this month only, but um I think that's doable. And um yeah, we could, we could decide that. Uh I mean, oh, it doesn't really require any resolution or anything. All we do is just direct our city manager on this. Exactly, and that's why I was thinking about the the gym thing, that's just direct the city manager and let let them deal with it. With all due respect, I know you're gonna do a good job.
Repeat, please.
Is that enough um clarity for you?
Yes.
We will have to vote on this, all right? Yeah, okay, so we will, we will talk on it on the December seventh.
Okay, good deal. All right.
Yep. All right, and if there is nobody else to speak on this, and we're gonna, I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned. And thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
Anytime um later than January fourth.
Thank you for hanging with us.